Participants. How do you bring them over? Attendees. More. Promote to panelists, okay. Promote to panelists, David Morrow, is he on it? He is, how about Bart Sheehan? So he comes over, okay.
Hi Craig, you're being recorded.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm actually with Eileen here, so I have to bring people over, because hers is not working. So I'm just seeing the names of who's here, so. And IBH. IBH, do you know who that is? Alright, so far only I have Maggie, Bart, and me, that's it. Trying to bring Graham over, but I can't seem to get him over. Okay.
[Inaudible] Oh.
Hey Beth, how are you?
Alright, let's try that again, hello.
How are you? So there's some technical difficulties, so I'm currently the township of Melbourne this evening, so until Eileen can hopefully get on, I'll do the township portion of everything, so. So we're just waiting for her, if not, I have the information.
Okay. I think in. Thank you, so you have the form like for vote taking and whatnot? Did you hear me?
I do, you're like, you're super delayed by the way, so I don't know if it's me or you, but like.
It might be me and I can relocate as well, and the whole world, I don't know. Alright, give me just a second.
Good, how are you? I think it's Beth, because Craig, you're not delayed at all.
Okay.
For me, at least.
Right.
Can, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I got you Bart.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, there's one. Do you want me to live off Eileen, or log back up? Okay, I just changed the name, so I don't say Township of Melbourne, but you should be okay.
You're actually a co-host, because I don't have the call anymore, so this way. I'm a co-host, so we're both on, so if one of ours goes down, the other one still, I don't know why Bart changed. How's my audio now? Is that any better?
Yeah, that's definitely better.
Hey guys.
Beth, we can't hear you.
I was giving directions to other people in my home. I'm sitting pretty centrally, so I just want to be able to be connected, but it's not the best time of evening here. Enjoy those days, they fly. You get to do it all over again with grandchildren. Beth, I know that Mark and Deborah are not going to be here tonight, I don't know of anyone else. That's right, those are the only two, I also got to know from. Or that I heard of, yeah. And but we still need a couple more folks. Yeah, we're waiting on Diane. I think Jorge. Here, I just saw you, Gaston and then Diane. Waiting on Diane. Thank you to Craig for pitching in when my technology was. Not sure what happened there, but. I thought Gaston was here.
There he is.
Yeah, he was, okay, here's Diane.
I don't see my video, can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you yet.
You know where my video is? I might need to add one of my kids, one of my tech supports. Hey Sam.
It's weird, because we brought you over, but you're still listed in the attendees tab, which is kind of weird, that's strange.
So is Bart, too.
And Bart.
Checking that out.
Yeah. Diane, do you maybe want to log out and just try coming back in, maybe it'll come in better? Is that better? Okay. Now Craig, now where did you go, Craig?
Me?
Are you, yeah, you went over.
No, I'm here.
The attendees are. Okay. Okay. I think that's everybody. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. That's mine. Okay, I'll go ahead and read us in, are we ready to, I thought, yep, Ed's here as well, okay, great. Okay. In accordance with section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Melbourne Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Melbourne Township website, Melbourne Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Melbourne Town Hall front door. Diane Aglow?
Here.
Gaston Helper?
Here.
Jorge Mastrochio?
Yeah.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Craig Plittner? Jonathan Sean?
Here.
Sreeni Vijay? Chair Daniel Bear?
Here.
Chair Jeff Zoll? Here. Thank you, okay, so we've got a couple items on our agenda for the evening, but we're first gonna go through the approval of meeting minutes of February 16th, 2022. They were distributed, Eileen, did you receive any comments before this meeting that you wanted to read out? I did not, no. Okay. Did anybody have any comments or corrections from the meeting minutes of February 16th? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion on the February 16th minute?
So moved.
Move to approve from Diane, okay, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? No, and I guess if anybody was absent, they would abstain. Okay, so meeting minutes from February 16th, 2022 passed. And without further ado, we would love to move into tonight's. We did have a Stone Mountain, which was not on the original, the Stone Mountain resolution. I apologize, I was reading the one that was most recently distributed. Okay, so we are going to go through the Stone Mountain resolution? Okay, give me just a moment, I want to make sure I have it open. When was that distributed? Make sure I have it in the right meeting minutes. Okay. March 10th, it was circulated. Okay.
Does everybody have that, because I just distributed it to the professionals, I did not distribute it to the board, so I don't know if I mean you then subsequently distributed it to the board?
I do not have it. What it had been, okay, then maybe we have to wait on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last thing having Stone Mountain, which is 21008, I just have the professional report from the, from before the meeting. So, okay, I think, well, let's hold that one till our next, our, the first April meeting.
Wait, wait, we're not going to hear them tonight now?
No, it's not not hearing, it's the memorialization, which we didn't receive, so we didn't review it.
I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. So we're talking about now moving forward with our Beehive application, which we didn't get to hear at the prior meeting. 21009, which is our, for approval for preliminary major, preliminary and final major site plan approval application 21009. So thank you for being here tonight, as well as I know our last meeting, as well as the previous meeting, so we welcome you for your big moment. Bart, we can't see you yet, hopefully we're not having an issue like we had with other members, but.
Let me, let me just see if there's something on my setup.
Great.
Madam Chair, I just also want to make sure that we get to the two ordinances, because I think they're on the Township Committee's meeting before our next meeting, so it's important that we make sure we leave time to get to it.
Okay, understood. I hear you, and I think, right, in order to leave ourselves time, so Mr. Sheehan, hopefully, hopefully this meeting all goes well and expeditiously. I think then what I would like to just let be known now is by 10:15 PM, we will stop if we're not through this application and carry, but let's see how the evening goes.
Alright, Madam Chair, I'm not sure why you don't see me, I am at a distant location, and if the service here is lost, then I will call in, but you can hear me clearly, correctly?
Yes, we can hear you, and I guess I just want to just confirm with our legal and our reporter, I guess because he's not sworn in.
There we go, how about that?
Still see your name right now.
How about that? Okay, here we go, got it, Mrs. Chair. There we go.
Perfect. Right. Mr. Sheehan, who do, I brought over Michael Lanzafama, and if you tell me who else you would like me to bring over, we will do that as well.
Mark Yeager.
Is he just Mark, I'm guessing, okay, yeah, Mark.
Yeah, Mark, Mark Yeager.
Okay, and there's someone, Minno and Moscow, or?
Stuart Johnson, yes, from Minno and Moscow. And Craig Paragoy. And Mike Lanzafama.
Mike's there. Okay, that should be everyone.
And Hillary Als, if she's logged in.
Yes, she is.
Okay. So assuming that all of the proposed witnesses are in and prepared to testify, I would like to begin. I would like to begin by refreshing the board's recollection about the prior opening, which I gave on March 2nd, which indicated that since the prior application was exhaustively summarized in the approving resolution, it is not my intention to go through all of those facts again tonight, but to focus only on the amendments proposed by this application.
Mr. Shane, I apologize for cutting you off. Jorge, I believe you are not at our previous meeting. I just wanted to ask, did you happen to watch the end of that to hear the opening statement that Mr. Sheen gave at the end, like you're at the end of?
I didn't. Actually, I was trying to understand now that. No, I didn't.
Okay, Mr. Bouzak, I guess I just want to confirm if he, if he's not up to date on the, on all of the proceedings, even though they weren't a witness testimony, it was the opening statement. Is he permitted to hear the application and vote on it, or is he not?
He's permitted to hear the application and raise any questions, but he's unable to vote on it.
Okay, okay, then Jorge will have you participate, but not vote. And Strini?
I was not present in the last meeting, but I did hear, I did hear the replay yesterday, so I'm up to date and comment.
Okay, thank you for test, for that testimony. Eileen, can you confirm we have enough voting members between us and our alternate, just to make sure, or just to state for Mr. Sheen? I just want to make sure you're aware of everything before we.
Well, okay, so Jorge is not eligible to go?
That's correct.
Mark is not here. And Deborah is not here. And Strini is eligible.
Correct.
Five, six. Seven. Maybe.
Great. We have eight voting members. Mr. Shane, if you're comfortable, we'd love to proceed with that, but I just wanted to make you fully aware.
Yes, my opening addressed no substantive issues other than to summarize the three variances that were required for one additional sign, the loading zone details, and the six exterior balconies. So I have no problem with the member participating subject to Mr. Bouzak's wise advice, which I defer to. Right, in an effort to expedite the hearing and to use your time, I had submitted a proposed evidence list, which has been amended since then. What I would propose to do would be to introduce the evidence list in the record tonight and supply a typed up list of the evidence as the hearing ends and days go by, if that's acceptable.
That's fine. You're saying you'll submit in subsequent days, the list.
Yeah, the written, so that it's clear.
I'm comfortable with that, but I guess I would ask our stenographer and Mr. Bouzak, because they are comfortable with that. As well.
We have 12, if I understand you, Mr. Sheen, you've, you've added exhibits to the list that you earlier provided.
The, the earlier list has been revised, Mr. Bouzak.
Okay, well, then, then, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily get a list in the first place, so why don't we, you're gonna have to introduce all these exhibits anyway. We'll do it the same way we always do. And then if you want to put that together on a, on a sheet, that's fine, but it's not necessary.
All right, then, then the evidence intended to be produced in the hearing would be A1, the aerial photo prepared.
Why don't we, Mr. Shane, why don't we do it as we go along? Because to go through it now, we're just listing it, and nobody's going to know what they are anyway. So when you're ready to, to do it, we'll just mark it, and everybody will know what we're talking about. I think that may expedite it.
Fine, then I would like to begin with the testimony of Mark Yeager, and that he be admitted to the platform to be sworn for that purpose. Now, Mr. Bouzak, all of the witnesses tonight have been previously qualified and sworn. Do you want them re sworn, or do you want them to be continually, continue as sworn witnesses?
I, I think they should be re sworn. This is a new, new, it's an amended application, but it's a new application. The old one was completed, so we have to handle this as a new, a new application.
All right, then, would ask that Mark Yeager be sworn after being admitted to the platform to give testimony in this matter?
And Mr. Yeager, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's be the truth, whole truth, not by the truth?
I do.
Just state your name, spelling your name for the record, please.
Mark Yeager, Y-E-A-G-E-R.
Good evening, Mr. Yeager.
Good evening.
All right, at the outset, Mr. Yeager, in accordance with the planner's request, could you please report on the existing conditions at the site and the, and a given overview of the modifications proposed by the application?
Yes, the existing conditions of the site haven't, have remained relatively unchanged for the past many, many months. As we all know, Wells Fargo vacated the building over two years ago. The building has continued to be maintained in its current state. We are hoping to venture soon on the beginnings of the work necessary to eventually demolish the existing improvements. And hopefully, with this, with this board's approval, move eventually towards vertical construction of the proposed project. As far as the proposed amendments go, you know, when the project was previously approved about this time last year, and as we moved into the actual construction drawings and development phase of the project, after much internal discussion and careful consideration, we decided to, we came to the judgment that the development of the site is best served and that the plan could be greatly improved by incorporating a handful of amendments, which I'll outline for you now. First, the vehicular ingress and egress drive, access drive and curb cut has been eliminated along Milburn Avenue. There, in its place, will be approximately a seven-foot wide pedestrian accessway from the parking garage onto the Milburn Avenue frontage. Additionally, the proposed ground floor commercial space fronting on Milburn Avenue has been extended eastward by approximately 24 feet in length and will add approximately 1,000 square feet of additional commercial space, which will result potentially in the need for a third commercial sign to be the same as the other two retail signs that were previously approved. Next, the loading area on Essex Street has been relocated to Spring Street. While the pickup and drop-off area on Essex Street is to remain as previously approved, the additional parallel parking space in that area has also been removed as part of this improvement. Next, the refuse and recycling room has been eliminated from the ground floor level on Essex Street and relocated to the parking garage level with access provided from Spring Street. The residential loading area has been relocated to be onsite with access off of Spring Street. There will be, we will also be requesting, I believe it's going to be approximately four of the angled parking spaces on Spring Street to be removed for loading space maneuverability with the relocation of that improvement to Spring Street. And then lastly, is the addition of six interior balconies facing the residential courtyard as supplemental residential amenities consistent with the custom of similar multifamily complexes in and around the area. So with that.
And Mr. Yeager.
Yes, I was just going to say that, that, that concludes the, the amendments that we are proposing.
All right, now, I'm going to ask if we can turn to the planner's report, and I ask or observe that the planner asked for a description of existing conditions and any site preparation, which you have already given a report on. Can you indicate whether or not it is the developer's intention to comply with the current electric charging station's requirement and would permit that to be adopted as a condition of approval if the board were so inclined?
Yes, we will.
And the planner asked for a comment with regard to the partial two-way traffic on Spring Street. Do you have an opinion on that as the developer?
I need, I need clarification on that, Bart. When you say, oh, he requested that we consider two-way traffic on Spring Street, which, which, which we, we believe is not in the best interest of the project and/or the township.
And in that regard, on that subject, would you defer to the civil engineer?
Yes, civil engineer or, or a traffic professional, whoever appropriately should respond to that.
All right, it was requested that you identify the plans to accommodate retail loading and unloading, since there is no onsite provision for that, nor is there a requirement under the ordinance for that.
Yes, we, we will make, we will make provisions for loading and trash and refuse for the commercial component as well.
Right, will there be access to the site for retail shoppers, or is the site confined to spaces for the tenants?
The, the parking spaces will be reserved for the residential tenants and as well as the employees of the commercial space. It will not be available or open for, for shoppers or guests.
All right, now, Mr. Yeager, the planner requested the installation of bollards in the parking garage separating pedestrians from the traffic. In your opinion, do you believe that those bollards are necessary?
We do not believe those bollards are necessary, given the low volume of traffic in and out of this, the speed at which these cars will be moving in and out and throughout the garage, and what we don't view to be a lot of conflicting movements between pedestrians and vehicles.
All right, and moving toward the end of the planner's comments relative to your testimony, can you indicate whether or not the developer agrees to provide bicycle storage onsite and on Milburn Avenue and adopt that as a condition of approval in the event that the board is so inclined?
Yes, we will.
All right, and finally, is it still the, the intention, as previously indicated and as made a condition of prior approval, that the project be LEED certified and Energy Star certified?
Yes.
And, and I'm sorry, the one other issue is that the planner requests light pole consistency on Milburn Avenue. Is that something that the developer accepts as a condition of any approval? Okay.
Yes, we do.
I have no further questions of this witness, Madam Chair, and would submit him to the examination of the board and any members of the interested public.
Thank you. And Mr. Yeager, I apologize. I didn't, I don't know if you gave for everybody's benefit. I just want to make sure you restate your, I guess, position with respect to this application. I just know we have some new members who didn't hear you the first time, so I'm sorry to ask you to repeat that.
No, not a problem. Thank you. Yes, so I, I am a principal in the ownership of what will be the development entity that will be with the approval and consent of this board be developing and constructing the apartment building as proposed.
Great, thank you for that clarification, for everyone's benefit. So I first turned to members of the board for question about his testimony regarding the existing site and the proposed changes to the improvement. I think for their specific questions, my guess is we will hear from the specific professionals, but feel free to ask questions you have of Mr. Yeager's testimony. Diane, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, since we'll be losing four parking spots on Spring, where you're removing the egress and ingress on Milburn Avenue, will that be able to accommodate a couple of parking spots?
Yes, we do anticipate that by relocating or by removing that Milburn Avenue entrance, that we will be able to pick up at least, at least one spot on Milburn Avenue where that entrance used to be located. I don't know that we'll be able to fit more than that, but certainly at least one.
Okay. Oh, so Spring Street originally forever had been two ways. Did the planner ask to make that back to two ways, so when people are leaving the building, everyone is not directed to the left and having to go around to where the fire station and police station are? Because if the traffic engineers feel that that would be okay, because it won't be, it might alleviate some congestion going around that bend, which leads me to my next point. I'm getting, you know, we're hoping it's something that may happen, is getting two lanes back into Milburn Avenue, or eventually Milburn Avenue might become two-way. But in the meantime, could Spring Street be two-way? Would that not be advantageous to your tenants?
So I, I will say in answer to the first part of your question, Ms. Aglow, is that I don't know what the planner's intent was by the comment. I don't know what he was thinking, or what, I'm sorry, what they were thinking when that comment was made. It was our professionals' opinion that I think there have been improvements made on Spring Street, the angled parking, et cetera, since it was two-way, that would make reinstating that two-way a little bit difficult because of the narrowness of the road. And then you've also got the, that, that left-hand movement. If you, if you reinstituted the Milburn Avenue direction of that traffic, you'd be in reinstituting that left-hand movement onto Milburn, you know, in, in a, in a area that's not that far from Douglas, so that, that may not be the safest way to bring that, to merge that traffic back together.
Well.
That's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bart. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's an issue that the traffic engineer can amplify on if that response is not adequate for Mrs. Aglow's question.
Right, because you're gonna have a lot of tenants, which is wonderful. It looks a beautiful building, but you are gonna have this congestion coming around the fire department and the police station. So, and then you've got the stop sign that had never been there before, and now with a lot of new cars and tenants coming out. I'm, I'm just wondering if it's something the traffic engineer, and we could ask Graham, who's on the call, top right box, what his, you know, feelings were on that, because I'm, I'm hoping there will be two lanes coming back on Milburn Avenue. So Graham, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Happy to provide a little bit of clarification context regarding our comment on the two-way traffic along Spring Street. Considering the elimination of one of the access points to the garage at Milburn Avenue, we felt that it was a little bit concerning to only have traffic, you know, heading northbound on Spring Street with access into and out of the garage that's serving, serving the property. So we thought that perhaps to provide better efficiency, it might be something to consider reinstating two-way traffic on Spring Street to allow egress and ingress to head down towards Milburn Avenue or up towards Essex. You know, as Ms. Aglow indicated, you know, having all traffic go northbound on Spring to Essex and circling around the site does make for a little bit of a limited condition. So it was just something that we wanted to see if the traffic engineer has additional testimony on her insight, to provide some consideration to that point. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Right, and historically, forever, Spring Street was two-way. There was a car, there was a, a speed accident there that involved one of our officers years ago. And then it was a very wide street. They put the angled parking in. I don't even know if they were put in by ordinance. I don't even know what you're removing for. So this might be a good time to address that. If cars going south, coming, making a right out of the development, it's very narrow there for the complete street. So it's, right now, it's a little bit confusing when cars are cutting across. I think would be actually very helpful to have that be two-way for, as we said, the congestion, the circulation, and visually car movement along that corridor. So I think the traffic engineer, I would like to hear his thoughts on that.
So, and so maybe, maybe to, to further address this, I could, I would just add one thing, is that I don't think reinstituting two-way traffic on Spring Street has any impact on the improvements in our plan or what we're proposing. So my suggestion would be is that if, in fact, this board decides to approve this project, and it moves forward as clarity is added to the traffic plans of the township, whether it be two, two lanes back on Milburn. two, two lanes back on Milburn, whether it be two-way traffic on Milburn or Essex, or any other things that are being considered, at that point with more clarity on some of those other impacts, um, if at that point, we, uh, somewhere down the road, the township decides that two-way traffic on Spring Street makes sense, then I, I think we would support that, that, that notion. I, I don't, I don't know that that necessarily needs to be resolved or addressed as part of this application, but we would, we would cooperate in the future as however the township feels most beneficial.
So lastly on that point, then, would it change the design of getting in and out of your garage at that point?
I do, I, I will, yeah, I'll def, I'll defer to the engineer on that, but I, I do not believe it will.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Thank you, uh, okay, um, Maggie, Megan.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening. Um, I had a question about your, are you adding more retail space, a thousand square feet of more retail space to this project?
Yes, so the prior application and approval, uh, had a 24-foot drive aisle approximately leading in and out of Milburn Avenue. So by elim, by eliminating that, and we reduced that to what is now a, a seven-foot pedestrian walkway, just to give connection from this Milburn Avenue into the garage, we pick up that space to, to just continue the storefront of commercial on Milburn Avenue. So that translates to approximately another thousand square feet from what was previously designed and approved.
So would that require then more parking spots for that third retail space?
Uh, I'd have to, again, I'd, I'd defer to, you know, where, where our envelope for parking is fairly well fixed. I believe we meet the RSI standards that had been previously submitted, we haven't changed the unit count for the, uh, residential, the number of units and or the required parking. So whether or not, you know, we, we would theoretically need another parking space for the thousand square feet, uh, I'll, I'll defer to, to the engineer.
Okay, and also the reconfiguration of Milburn Avenue on-street parking to accommodate six parallel spaces. There's three spaces existing, have you done a study on that? To add, or add more of those spaces?
Yes, I think that was the question that was previously asked as to whether or not by, uh, eliminating that drive entrance off of Milburn Avenue, we would be able to gain additional parking spaces on Milburn Avenue, and I think the answer is yes, we, we believe we certainly can.
It's been my experience that the town doesn't necessarily like re, uh, angled spaces, so that's why I was questioning.
Yeah, the, 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 the spaces I think we're referring to are, would be parallel spaces on Milburn, they would, they would not, not be angled.
Parallel, okay. I think that's all for me for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, no problem, uh, Dan, Beth.
I have a protocol question, and not necessarily for Mr. Jaeger or Mr. Sheen, it's more from Mr. Budzak. Um, this is, this is an amended, um, major site plan application. In the application, the applicant states that they would, are requesting a waiver of the EIS under an amended major site plan. Is it necessary to grant a waiver? They're, they specifically state that the EIS has not changed based on the project, which I certainly can understand that, but just from a protocol perspective, do we need to go through the process of granting that waiver now? Or should they have even requested a waiver for an amended application?
Uh, I, your, your question is a good one, if they're relying upon the previous, um, EIS that was submitted and that there's been no change on it, uh, that should just be incorporated, uh, in this application, uh, as opposed to seeking a waiver for it, because uh, this way then, uh, it's clear that whatever is set forth in that prior ERS is, the EIS is applicable to this amendment.
Okay, and I would agree with you. Um, I'm just stating, stating the, the fact that it, it does appear in the application as a wa, as a waiver, and so just noted that we did not have to go through the process of grant a waiver for the EIS. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent point. Um, and thank you, Council, for your input, um. Shreeni.
Uh, good evening, folks. Uh, so firstly, thank you for changing the vehicle ingress and egress away from Milburn Avenue, I think that was the point of discussion last year, uh, where some of us had a, uh, view on that. But anyhow, my question is, uh, I'm sorry if I missed this, but it says the subsurface detention system is to be relocated, uh, due to the removal of the Milburn Avenue garage entrance. Uh, where is it going to be relocated?
I think that's a question for the civil engineer.
Okay, all right.
Okay, great, so please, yeah, please, Ben, to circle back to answer that at the appropriate time, thanks. Um, anybody else have a question for Mr. Jaeger on his testimony? Gaston, go ahead.
Uh, just real quick, uh, the refuse, um, logistics are being changed a little bit, and we had a problem before with refuse going out on sidewalks, you know, during times when people were walking. Now we're gonna have twice the refuse, could you explain exactly how the refuse is gonna work now?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, when you say twice the refuse?
So, so you're, you're collecting it from both sides of the building now and putting it on Essex Street? So before it was going out to Essex and then one on Milburn? And just making sure that everything is gonna be okay to where it doesn't block sidewalks and we're, we're yeah, that doesn't interfere with any type of pedestrian movements.
Yes, for sure, so both, so there are two, there remain two trash rooms in the building, one behind the commercial space, kind of down towards the Milburn Avenue frontage, the other, uh, on the Essex elevation in the, in the lower level. So the, as the refuse trucks back into what is now the Spring Street refuse pickup, they will pull inboard of the building. So building management will be responsible for getting through the garage, never going to the sidewalk or being external to the footprint of the building, will be responsible for getting dumpsters from both of those trash rooms to the, the trash, uh, the, the garbage trucks, which again will be inboard to the footprint of the building.
That is awesome, thank you. And then I guess another quick one, um, with the drop-off area. Is the drop-off area still necessary? I understand there're gonna be some deliveries, but can the delivery trucks, or can they use the uh, loading space as well, or was that not part of the plan?
So we don't think that that is, is the, the best, the best use for the kinds of things we're envisioning. We're taught, we're thinking about, uh, Uber, we're thinking about Rideshare, we're thinking about Amazon, FedEx, UPS. Probably not practical to ask those folks who are quick in and quick out, these are not long-stay type of drop-offs or pickups. We don't think it's practical to ask those folks to get down Spring Street into the lower part of the building. We, we could potentially have some security issues, what have you, we would prefer and think it's much more convenient to keep that curb cut on Essex Street where people can then exit and enter in and out of the Essex Street lobby, since those are, those won't be the commercial type of, of, uh, activity that we envision. We, we think the mail, with the mailroom being located up there and that lobby being located on the Spring and Essex Street corner, that that's the right location for that, that type of quick in and out activity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from Mr. Jaeger, uh, I see Ed, Budzak, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Jaeger, two, two things, uh, one is you testified that there will be, uh, a, uh, there, there will be an area for retail loading and unloading, that provisions have been made for that, but you didn't indicate where those provisions were made, is that going to be your engineer's testimony, or do you know where that will be?
Uh, the engineer may also comment on it, but I think I could address that as well. So we anticipate that, uh, as is typically the case in many downtown settings, a lot of the quick in and out, whether again it be FedEx, UPS, the type of box trucks that many of the retailers on Milburn Avenue and in other downtowns use will be done through the front door and can be done off of the Milburn, uh, the Milburn Avenue, uh, entrance area. To the extent that there may be larger or longer-term deliveries, we anticipate that those can be handled through the Spring Street entrance, and with the assistance of building management and the retailers themselves, make sure that anything that gets delivered that requires, uh, multiple people and or an extended stay can be handled through the rear entrance of the retail stores or the commercial stores through the garage.
Um, secondly, with regard to the bicycle storage, you said that you would be agreeable to providing, if I understood it correctly, bicycle storage on Milburn Avenue and also interior. Uh, do you have the locations of, and, and the, uh, type of storage you're talking about? Was that your testimony, or will that be the engineer's testimony?
That would, that would probably also either be the building architect or the engineer's testimony. But we do, we do have dedicated, we do have dedicated spaces internal to the lower level where we believe we can do the bike, the internal bike storage. And then I think it was the planner's comment about the particular type, you know, from a consistency standpoint of the exterior bike storage facility on Milburn Avenue that we will also be prepared to accommodate.
Okay, but we will have testimony on that from someone else.
That'll be the testimony of the civil engineer.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, Graham, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask about the, um, design approach for the incorporation of the six additional balconies. Um, you know, I know that four of the balconies that are proposed are to the interior of the courtyard of the building, um, which is consistent with the recommendation, uh, of the zone ordinance, um, which does recommend private interior open space. Um, the two balconies that are proposed, so along the side of the building extending, uh, towards Spring Street, um, you know, are, are sort of exterior from that interior, uh, they're on an exterior wall and and they appear to be pretty close set, uh, to the property line, uh, with the adjacent lot six. I was just curious about the design intent or the design approach um, for incorporating additional balconies, uh, particularly in that area. I don't know if this is a good comment for the architect.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that if I can, uh, to our architect who'll be testifying shortly.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the board? Okay, uh, at this time, we would ask members of the public, if anybody who's in attendance has a question for Mr. Jaeger based on his testimony. Hearing what you've heard, feel free to use the raise hand function if you have any questions. Okay, oh, I see one, okay. And so we'll have you come on in. And just taking a second online, okay, um, I guess, Stephanie Morgan, hopefully you're connected and can turn your video and audio on.
Hello?
Hi there. We can hear you, we can't see you, but, um.
Hold on, let's see. Hmm, I hit start video, but it doesn't seem to be.
Oh, it looks like, it looks like it's trying to start up, there we go, we see you.
Um, my name is, um, Stephanie Harris Morgan, I live at forty-nine Greenwood Drive uh, in South Mountain in Milburn. Um, and I have a couple of questions. The proposed loading dock um, is, is it long enough, I, I don't know what kinds of trucks the deliveries, uh, are going to be made by, but is that, is the loading dock long enough for the, for the truck, or is the truck going to be protruding out beyond?
I'll defer, I'll defer, yeah, I'll defer that to the testimony of our civil engineer.
Okay. Um, the other thing I looked at is, I, I understand what you're doing, uh, with the getting in, the adding the trucks in, um, and needing those four stalls for the, I guess, a K-turn. It, I was, I, I mean, my thought was as a, as a driver, um, the, the, the last remaining stall up toward the corner of Essex and um, Spring is, I mean, unless you needed it, it needs to be there for parking count, it's kind of a, you know, given the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of the deck, it seems to me that that's conceivably dangerous, I mean, if somebody's coming out and making a left up Spring to go to Essex, that, you know, somebody could be backing out of that spot unless it's reserved for, I don't know, somebody who's staying long-term, you know, who's somebody who's manning the lobby or what have you. I was wondering what, what the purpose was in keeping that stall instead of just adding it to the no-parking hatched area.
Yeah, Madam Chair, tha- that's a subject that has been discussed with the civil engineer and the township engineer, and will be amplified in the testimony to be given by the civil engineer.
Excellent, thanks, okay, so Ms. Morgan, it sounds like we'll, we'll hopefully touch on that shortly, thank you.
The other question I had was the drop-up area on Essex, I, it was really hard for me to read, but it looks like it's protruding out beyond the, like, into the cartway. Is that, is that accurate?
No, the, the, the curb cut, and I don't have the exact dimension in front of me, but it, it is in fact a recess from the curb cut area to allow for a car to pull off do their, do their drop-off without impacting traffic flow on Essex.
Got it, okay, thank you, I just, I'm sorry, I just, I couldn't read it and I thought I would just ask the question.
Sure.
Um, I guess the other question I had was, or thought that I had was the radius from Douglas to Milburn Avenue was changed, um, when, you know, all the street work, uh, improvement work was done in Milburn. My suggestion would be to return it to um, the, you know, pull the radius in so that if ultimately we decide, that Milburn decides to do something different on Milburn Avenue, that, that, uh, radius has already been uh, tucked in to accommodate the, the change in the, um, and potential change in the traffic flow on Milburn Avenue. I don't think it impacts the development at all.
Okay, that's, that's more of a comment, a recommendation than a question for Mr. Jaeger.
Yes, and, uh, would require township, uh, determination, approval, and evaluation before anything like that was done unrelated to the project.
Okay. And that's it, I just, I noticed that the, um, I, I guess it's, it'll get straightened out when the submission is complete, but the architectural drawings don't jive with the site plan with respect to what's happening on Spring Street with parking and the hatched area and so on, I assume when the, when the submission is final, that will all be straightened out.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you for your question. Uh, if there are any other members of the public that have questions for Mr. Jaeger on his testimony, now is the time to use the right hand function. And seeing none, um, I would turn it back to Mr. Sheen to likely call your next witness.
Uh, one more point with Mr. Jaeger before, uh, we call it next. Chair, Mr. Jaeger, in the, um, Township Engineers' report, it was requested that any cherry trees to be removed be set aside for pickup so that they can be replanted elsewhere in town. Is that something that the applicant would accept as a condition of approval, in the event that the board was so inclined?
Yes, we've already been in touch with, uh, the members from the Department of Public Works about that and, uh, are, are formulating a plan to work with them on, uh, a suitable relocation to their, their satisfaction.
Right, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Madam Chair, with the board's approval, I would ask that the testimony of Stuart Johnson, uh, the architect previously qualified in regard to this matter, uh, be called and admitted to the platform to give testimony, uh, in connection with this, uh, matter.
Welcome, um, and I, we're, I just want to hear the qualifications again, we're gonna re-qualify, uh, Mr. Johnson per Mr. Budzak's recommendation that we're treating this application uniquely as itself.
Fine, fine. Mr. Johnson.
If you, just raise your right hand, please. Do, do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth? Uh, yes, I do. Just state your name for the record, please. Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh, my name is, uh, Stuart Johnson. And I'd be happy to, uh, provide any credentials or background if you would like.
Yes, please.
Uh, I, sure, great. Um, I'm a principal of Minnewosco Architects and Planners, uh, we're a ninety-five architectural firm, or, uh, ninety-five-person architectural firm based in Lambeville, New Jersey, and Newark, New Jersey. Um, I am a registered architect with a current New Jersey license. Uh, I have a bachelor's of architecture from Syracuse University, um, I've appeared and qualified before this board. Um, I've appeared and qualified before this board in the past as well as many boards across the state of New Jersey. And um, I am the architect of record and our office oversaw the development of the cycle application being considered before this board this evening as well as the prior approvals.
Great. Thank you for running through that. We will hear you as an architect this evening.
Right now, Mr. Boosak, this witness will refer to eleven exhibits. Would you like the exhibits to be introduced in bulk or individually as they come up?
Uh, individually as they come up.
All right. Mr. Johnson, would you, in your testimony, identify for the board and members of the interested public? All modifications proposed by this amended application. And to the extent that you wish to refer to an exhibit, I would ask you if you would give the title to it. And then wait while it's authenticated to the board's satisfaction.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
All right, please, if.
With that, I'm going to share my screen here and share my first exhibit this evening. Um, so I believe we will mark this as exhibit A1. This is a aerial photograph of the existing site condition. This is prepared by Casey and Keller. Uh, and this was used during the prior public uh site point hearing relative to this application.
And what does that exhibit display?
This exhibit displays an existing uh site condition. This is a aerial site photograph. Uh, the yellow outline here indicates the site property. For that, I'm happy to uh proceed on this.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh, the intent of this is just to remind everyone of where the site is located. Um, yeah, as we all know, uh, the site's located here within the downtown of Melbourne Township. Uh, the site is approximately uh one point five three acres. The site has frontage on Melbourne Avenue here to the south. Uh, Douglas Street here to the west, frontage on Essex Street to the north, Spring Street here uh to the east. Uh, the existing site conditions, there is the existing Wells Fargo uh commercial bank building and surface parking that supports that use. Um, this, the site uh generally slopes from north to south um with a ten-foot grade differential from Essex Street to that of Melbourne Street. Um, so as we, as we present the architecture, you'll get a better understanding of the massing of the proposed architecture. Uh, but we would just wanted to use this to set the context. Um, as previously stated, um, the adjacent uses are commercial business uses. Uh, on Melbourne Avenue as well as along Spring Street, uh, single-family homes uh to the west along Douglas Street. And municipal buildings to the north along Essex Street, uh, consisting of the fire department, the police station and other surrounding properties. Uh, the site is an ideal location for a new moderate density multifamily community here within the downtown. Um, it provides for an opportunity to create a gateway uh at the western entry to the town here along Melbourne Avenue. Uh, consistent with the redevelopment uh in the master plan for, for the downtown. Uh, the site is convenient to mass transit. It's about a ten-minute walk to the train station. And convenient access to uh major roadways uh for shops and dining as well as employment. With that, I'm going to advance the slide here to my next exhibit this evening, and we will mark this as exhibit A2. Uh, this is sheet A zero six of the previously approved uh site plan application. And this is an illustrative perspective view uh looking east from Melbourne Avenue of the previously approved project. It has a date of uh November fourth, twenty twenty. Um, so with that, um, I'd like to state uh that the project substantially uh as it, as it's related to the architectural design, the exterior massing, the exterior building materials. Uh, the proposed density improvements to the site remain substantially similar to that of the project which was previously approved um approximately about a year ago. Um, as shown here, this represents uh two levels of residential apartment units over ground floor parking and retail. Uh, there are fifty-three residential apartment units. That's the same density that was uh previously approved. There was a minor modification to the unit mix. There's one more uh two-bedroom market rate unit now versus the prior application and one less market rate, uh, one-bedroom unit. Uh, that is due to the relocation of the uh refuse termination room that was previously located along Essex Street. Um, but again, the massing of the building, uh, the design of the building, the narrower bays along Doug, uh, along Douglas Street. Uh, the brownstone stoop style entries that are along Douglas Street and then turn the corner onto Essex Street. Where we add the two-story amassing uh remains uh consistently or substantially the same. Percentage of exterior building materials, quality uh masonry beer, uh, masonry veneer and cast stone being used at the base of the building. Again, substantially remain the same. The only differences are uh that through the uh engineering and design of the building, we have now incorporated approximately seven. Uh, exterior Juliet balconies on uh Melbourne, Douglas and Essex and Essex Street uh. In uh total, which uh we'll see in the building elevations here in a minute, that provides additional architectural uh relief and adds value to the overall facades. Um, so it's really an architectural design element. Uh, there was note to the six interior balconies that are located interior to the building within the courtyard. Which I'll make reference to later, um, as well as the improvements made along Melbourne Avenue where we eliminated one of the garage entrances. We extended the retail by approximately twenty-four feet, which allows for new elegant storefront windows to um. Further activate that ground floor facade and I think further encourages the pedestrian activity um along that Melbourne Avenue frontage. So I think that's a real smart design, um, as well as the relocation of the refuse termination room and loading area that was previously located on Essex Street. That's now been moved to Spring Street adjacent to uh the one uh vehicular ingress and egress access point uh for the project. Uh, so with that, I'm going to advance the slide here. Uh, to my next exhibit this evening, which we will mark this as exhibit A3. This is sheet A zero seven. It's an illustrative perspective view looking west from Essex Street of the previously approved project. So again, uh, similar uh in my, in my previous testimony there with, with the prior exhibit. Uh, the exterior massing, the exterior architectural design here, percentage of building materials. Um, the location of the secondary residential lobby uh creating an activated corner at, at the intersection of Spring Street and Essex. Remains substantially the same. The only difference here, again, on this facade is we introduced um a few Juliet balconies on the second floor to provide for additional architectural relief and interest. And in the foreground here uh with the private, with the previous application, uh, there was a short-term uh drop-off and pickup area here that was inboard of the curb. And then adjacent to it, there was a loading area and one parallel parking space intended for residential move-in and or trash pickup. That has now been eliminated. However, that short-term drop-off and pickup area here that is inboard from uh the vehicular lanes of travel, that does remain.
Stuart, could I stop you for one second, please?
Sure.
In the illustrative perspectives that you have just introduced. You are showing the board a perspective of what was previously approved. And make reference in regard there to of what is proposed by this amendment, correct?
That's correct.
And you will have an exhibit that will display the result of the proposed amendments that you have referred to later in your testimony.
We do. Uh, we submit it to this board. It's in your application package. Uh, but we have color rendered exterior elevations. Uh, that reflect what you're seeing here in the illustrative rendering. Uh, however, they include those revisions that I made note to. Uh, the Juliet balconies either uh on the exterior street-facing facades, uh, the interior balconies within the courtyards. Uh, and or the elimination of uh the refuse room and access door here on Essex Street. Uh, the elimination of the vehicular garage entrance along Melbourne Avenue, the expansion of that retail. Um, but uh, but again, you'll see that in the exterior building elevations, yes.
All right, please continue with A4.
Great. So exhibit A4, uh, this is sheet A zero one point one. Uh, this is a ground floor comparison exhibit of the proposed and previously approved plan. So I think this will be a really helpful exhibit that will supplement the testimony that Mr. Jaeger had previously provided. Um, so the image on the left is the proposed, is, is the current proposed concept. The image on the right was the previously approved plan. These are colorized versions of uh the site plan application uh that you received in your uh, within your packet. Um, so the first thing I'll talk about is retail. So as can be seen here, if I zoom in on my screen, uh, the prior application had a two-way movement uh garage entrance located on Melbourne Avenue. There were some concerns there uh relative to pedestrian safety and access and traffic concerns along Melbourne Avenue. Uh, reflecting upon that, the applicant um agreed to and has redesigned the project here to eliminate that garage entrance. Which allows for more pedestrian-friendly streetscape experience. Um, we've extended that retail by approximately twenty-four feet. So the retail increased from three thousand square feet to four thousand uh square feet at the ground floor. We are still providing a um pedestrian accessway here through secure key fob doors to provide access to the parking garage beyond. Uh, the other revisions made on the ground floor here um are, we, we relocated uh the residential storage lockers, which were poshed in darker gray here where my mouse or cursor is on the prior plan. That ran along uh the exterior of the building. As we, as we advanced the engineering drawings and looked at the footing and foundation design. Um, we, we, we found a more efficient way to design uh the footing and foundation uh design at this lower level. And through um efficiencies in the floor plan layout on the second floor, we found adequate area to uh provide for uh residential rental storage located on the second floor of the building. And as Mr. Jaeger made reference to previously, uh, we found an opportunity to relocate the bicycle storage, the secure bicycle storage for residents of the community. Um, into a um area here central within the parking garage that has access to uh the secondary lobby on the ground floor. Um, the number of parking spaces remains the same. So there are ninety-seven structured parking spaces. Ninety-three of those spaces are dedicated as residential. That's still a one point seven five parking ratio that complies with the ordinance. We're also providing four commercial retail spaces for employees of the retail. Again, that complies with the ordinance. The ordinance requires that a minimum of four. Parking spaces be provided for the commercial retail tenants. Um, as previously noted, uh, yes, the applicant will comply with the state's new electric vehicle ordinance where fifteen percent of the parking being provided. Will be make-ready um EV parking spaces where the first third are brought online day one. And then the next two-thirds are brought online within six years after receiving the CO uh for the building compliant with the ordinance stature. Um, the other changes that were made here on the ground floor um is, is that um previously. So there are two residential uh trash chutes internal to the building. There's also a trash storage and holding area here behind the retail. That remains the same. Uh, the change that was made was uh previously the refuse termination room terminated uh terminated at uh at the Essex Street. And again, we had this loading area here. Now that trash uh terminates, the trash recycling uh terminates at the garage level. Uh, at the first floor garage level. And we've designed a uh loading access and pull-off area here that's inboard of the property line. That accommodates SU thirty-sized vehicles. Uh, SU thirty-sized vehicles are a typical trash truck or recycling truck. That can back in or head into this space. It also more than accommodates residential move-ins. Um, so that, that would allow for an SU thirty truck to be staged there for a short-term period of time. Um, and not interfere with the public sidewalk uh or the right-of-way condition there. Um, additional testimony will be provided by um our civil engineer and our traffic engineer uh relative to um. Specific details associated with that. Uh, but again, residential move-ins uh similar to the prior testimony, there's only one occurring at any given time. Uh, there's a building management representative on call or on premise whenever that is occurring. They typically occur during off-period times of late morning or early afternoon, so not to interfere with residents of the community or the peak traffic periods of the day. Um, so again, we think that's a smart design there. It allows for, as Mr. Jaeger had said, uh, the residential uh refuse or recycling would be brought out here. Would be brought out by a porter within the building. It would be staged here for pickup uh two to three times a week. Uh, that's a scheduled and coordinated event that occurs on a regular schedule. So again, I think that's a smart design, eliminating that from Essex Street. Um, any, you know, unsightly um. Uh, designs associated with that. Um, so that generally represents the uh, the ground floor. Um, so with that, then I'm going to move to uh the second, the second level. So this is sheet, um, this is exhibit A5. Which is um sheet A zero two point one. This is a second floor uh comparison exhibit of the proposed and the previously approved plan. Um, so as you will see, the general layout of the building, the general footprint of the building remains substantially the same. The overall dimensions of the building are substantially the same uh within inches of that which was previously approved. Um, I will note that the uh, the proposed plan now is actually approximately eight hundred and thirty-two gross square feet smaller. So it's a slightly smaller building footprint from that which was previously approved. Uh, that's relative to, as Mr. Jaeger had noted. We've advanced the engineering and design, the schematic design development of the project, and just looking at typical unit depths and corridor depths, et cetera. Uh, just creating some construction efficiencies and tolerances there. Uh, the overall gross square footage is actually reduced by approximately eight hundred and thirty-two uh gross square feet. Um, the unit mix again remains comparable. The only uh, the only difference was that at the second floor level. Um, two one-bedroom units became two two-bedroom units and on the third floor level, one two-bedroom unit became one one-bedroom unit. That resulted in one new uh market rate two-bedroom unit, one less market rate one-bedroom unit for the project. For a total of fifty-three dwelling units. Again, there are forty-five market rate units, eight affordable units. Uh, that are designed in an inclusionary manner spread throughout the building, uh, similar to the, to the previously approved plan. Uh, the building design allows for an open-air courtyard uh that allows for passive outdoor recreation. Uh, passive outdoor amenity recreation for the community. Uh, the interior amenity area. Um, square footage and location and proximity and types of interior amenities again are consistent with the prior approval. I will zoom in here um and make note to the Essex Street uh secondary lobby. Again, you can see where we expanded the residential here on the ground floor to provide for more active use along that streetscape. Versus the refuse uh loading and recycling area in the previously approved plan. And the area poshed in darker gray here in the proposed plan is where we propose to provide for uh secure residential storage internal to the building. Um, it's smartly designed with good proximity and access to one of the elevators in the building.
Yeah, Mr. Stuart, would you mention the uh modification in the bedroom mix? Was there any change to the bedroom mix in the affordable units as originally proposed?
No, there was not. So that remains the same. So there are two, three-bedroom affordables, five two-bedroom affordable units and one one-bedroom affordable unit. Which complies with uh the COA and UHAC regulations.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so with that, I'll advance to my next exhibit. Uh, this is exhibit A6, sheet A zero two point two. Uh, this is a unit mix and parking comparison for the project. So I think I just highlighted this uh for everyone. Um, but on the left is the proposed, on the right is the previously approved. Uh, fifty-three dwelling units. Again, uh, one more market rate two-bedroom, one less market rate one-bedroom. The affordable units remain the same. The parking count remains the same. So ninety-seven total structured parking spaces, ninety-three residential, four retail parking spaces dedicated for employees. Uh, that all complies with uh the ordinance. So my next exhibit then uh would be exhibit A7. And this is sheet A zero four, um, which is a colorized version of the exterior building elevations. It has a date of December sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. And specifically, this is the west elevation at Douglas Street and the south elevation at Melbourne Avenue. So again, you'll see here that these exterior elevations are consistent with that of the previously approved plan. They are consistent with that of the illustrative rendering that I had shared, uh, view looking at Melbourne Avenue as well as the view looking at Essex Street. Uh, the building massing remains the same. Uh, percentage of exterior building materials remain the same. Location of residential windows remain the same. The difference here on Douglas Street, we've introduced three Juliet balconies along Douglas Street. One, two, three on the second floor, which provides for an elegant railing design there, allows for additional air and light to those residential apartment units. Um, I think it's a smart design that provides additional architectural relief on the facades. One point I will note is that the overall building height actually decreased uh from the prior approvals. Previously, um, previously approved the building. Previously, previously approved, the building height was 39 feet, two inches. As shown today, the building height measured from the average grade to the highest point of the building is 38 feet, two inches. The reason that changed was that the overall building height decreased slightly due to working with the structural engineer and actually specifying the structural floor trusses and systems for the building. But also, as we located the loading and access area off of Spring Street, the average grade plane changed slightly. So the average grade plane changed slightly and the building structure decreased slightly, which resulted in the overall building height decreasing by about 12 inches, which complies with.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned a change in the building height, the change in the building coverage and a change in the lot coverage. Notwithstanding these changes, it still reflects a plan that is fully compliant with the dimensional regulations of the township's ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
And and the Juliet balconies and other facade changes are also consistent with the design standards of the RMF AH2 ordinance?
That is correct. They are all complying with the RMF AH2 multifamily affordable housing zone ordinance. Yes.
All right. And now you have colorized versions of the other elevations, correct?
Yeah, I do. So I'm going to move here to drawing number two, which is the south elevation at Milburn Avenue. Again, substantially the same. The difference that was made here is we've we have included two Juliet balconies here on Milburn Avenue on the second level of residential. And and again, we've eliminated the garage entrance here. We've expanded the storefront windows, the aluminum storefront windows at the ground floor. And with that, expanding, expanding the retail by about 1,000 square feet, we think it's an ideal opportunity for perhaps a third retail tenant. These are smaller convenience retail type tenants here that would, you know, support and complement the commercial retail and merchants found within the downtown. So we are asking for a variance relative to retail and commercial signage. We had previously asked for that variance. These are canopy signs. These are dimensional, these are aluminum dimensional cut letters that are LED halo lit that are mounted to the top of the canopy. So we're simply asking for a third retail sign there as the retail expanded along that frontage.
It's consistent with the prior resolution of approval at paragraph number 12, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. And before I move to my next exhibit, I'll just, I'd like to make one reference here. So on the south elevation of Milburn Avenue, we are showing the elevation beyond here. And the elevation beyond the second floor of the courtyard, these are, these are internal to the courtyard and they face a side property line. So they do not face a public right of way. They don't face a front yard. We did design six interior balconies within the courtyard. And again, I'm going to make additional testimony and reference to those in just a minute. But those are, those are ideally designed to provide individual access to outdoor private space for residential, for a handful of residential units within the building. They are generally compliant with the design standards within the ordinance, other than the fact that the ordinance recommends that they be recessed within the facades. These are projecting within the facades. But I will note that these balconies here are approximately 231 feet from the curb at Milburn Avenue. And what we're not seeing in this elevation are the existing 35 foot tall commercial commercial structures that are located in front of this along Milburn Avenue. So we'll come back to this in a minute. We provided site sections and building sections to show those sight lines. But again, we chose not to show those in the elevation because we wanted to better describe what the facade was and be accurate with you. But there are 35 foot tall existing structures here on Milburn Avenue that would block much of the view of these. And the height of these balconies relative to Milburn Avenue is approximately 23 feet. So so again, those those existing structures do block much of that view. And that elevation here, these balconies are 231 feet away from the curb as seen at the human scale along Milburn Avenue. So with that, then I'm going to move to my next exhibit. This is exhibit A eight, which is sheet A zero five. And again, this is a colorized version of the exterior building elevations. It has a date of December 6, 2021. Specifically, this provides the exterior elevations, the north elevation at Essex Street, as well as the east elevation at Spring Street. Again, generally consistent with that which was previously approved, as well as the illustrative renderings that I shared earlier. Other than here at Essex Street, we eliminated the the aluminum commercial doors that provided access to the trash and loading and recycle area. That's now replaced with residential apartment units where that has expanded, provided an active use along that frontage. I think that's a more elegant design and appropriate design. Again, encouraging the pedestrian experience along that frontage. We've also here at Essex Street included two Juliet balconies here on the second floor. And then moving down here to the east elevation as seen from Spring Street. Again, the exterior massing, exterior build materials are substantially similar to that of the previously approved project. I'm going to zoom in here for a moment on the corner of Spring Street. So we, we, we still have the secondary residential lobby as previously shown. We have the garage entrance, which remains in the same location here now, providing both ingress and egress. And where these doors are shown, this is elevation beyond, so that's actually recessed and set back from the building curb. And again, our engineer will speak more to that. But that allows for an SU 30 sized vehicle to stage there for for shorter lengths of time outside of the the pedestrian sidewalk area along that frontage. The other revisions here that were made to this facade is interior to this courtyard. So this is the interior courtyard elevation as shown here. I can, I can annotate here momentarily. But this is the interior courtyard elevation. And again, we have a site section that we'll share in a minute. You do see the profile here of one of the balconies that is being proposed. The balcony comes outboard or is cantilevered outboard by approximately six feet from the exterior building facade. But that's approximately 80 feet from the curb along Spring Street. So again, as seen from the human scale or standing on Spring Street, that's about 80 feet away. And we'll show that here in a building section and a site section in a minute. So with that, then I'm going to introduce exhibit, exhibit A nine, which is sheet A zero three, and this is a colorized version of the third floor plan of the building. It has a date of December 6, 2021. Again, the layout and configuration of this floor, the units all are substantially similar to that of that which was which was previously approved. What I would like to highlight here as I zoom in on this is the six balconies that are located internal to the courtyard. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six balconies, three of which are predominantly blocked by the building from any exterior view or four of which really are. And and then there are two here that face a side property line. But again, they all face a side or rear property lines versus public right aways. We feel that they are designed to be internally to the building. And again, I can speak more to that in a minute. But I think, actually, we'll, we'll, we'll go to that now relative to the balconies. So again, we have designed six, six exterior balconies here within the courtyard. They're all at the second level of the building. They're all inward facing here or 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 internal. The redevelopment plan does encourage the the design of individual private open space and interior balconies that do not face public streets. And they're encouraged to provide a private outdoor space for some or all of the apartments within the building. It's also recommended that they be recessed within a wider facade or within a projecting bay of the building, rather than projecting alone from the facade. And the balconies are are meant to be designed visually permeable such that the vertical posts and horizontal waters, the horizontal wires allow for light and air to pass through them. So I'm going to advance back here to the exterior elevation so we can see the design of those. But again, we've designed them to be permeable, to allow for light and air to go through them. The only solid parts there are just the fascia board of of the projected balcony and the posts. They do, again, these balconies are encouraged. It's a smart design, especially we're seeing this, it's it's even more important in a post pandemic and post COVID world to allow for private individual access to the outdoors. It allows for increased light and air, fresh air to those units for some residents who may be continuing to work remotely, moving forward. Again, they do not face the public right of way. They generally face interior to the courtyard. These two balconies here are 231 feet away from the curb, from the curb line here on Milburn Avenue. And again, there are existing structures here that are located that are approximately 35 feet in building height. The height of these balconies are 23 feet relative to the curb elevation here. The, the, the balconies are designed within narrower bays along that facade. And I will note that that we've designed these facades, you can see that if I zoom in on the plan, we've designed articulation to that facade. So I believe that the intent of the ordinance was was not to have a flat static facade and then just have these balconies projecting from them. We've designed an ornate and articulated facade that has release and movement to it. So again, architecturally, I think that these balconies provide for relief and detail. They provide for smart and great access to outdoor, private individual outdoor space for some of the residents of the building. We've designed them to be visually permeable. And the use of those balconies or what residents may put out there or store on those balconies can all adequately be controlled by the tenant lease, tennis, the tenant lease agreements within the building. This is a small building of approximately 53 units. Every day, there will be a building maintenance officer or someone there on site. Again, these balconies face inward to the courtyard, so I believe that that can be controlled. The next two exhibits I have just support this. But this is exhibit A 10, which is sheet A 5.1. And this is, this provides two existing street views along Milburn Avenue and Spring Street. So the existing view one here taken from Google Earth is an existing street view depicting the existing structures that are found along Milburn Avenue there that are in front of that facade. And again, I noted that the distance from the curb here to those two balconies is approximately 231 feet. The second, the second drawing on the sheet is drawing number two. This is an existing view from Spring Street. We can see the existing architecture there, you know, is a little mixed in regards to style, commercial garages and one story, commercial retail spaces. But where those two balconies or where the closest balcony is here within this facade is approximately 80 feet away from the curb line along Spring Street. And the last exhibit that I will introduce this evening, this is exhibit A 11, which is marked as sheet A zero 5.2. And this is a building and site section providing view angle diagrams. It has a date of March 2, 2022. So we provided two different site and building sections here. Drawing number one on the, on the screen is a north, south cross section that cuts from Milburn Avenue to Essex Street, depicts the two story massing of the building on Essex, the three story massing along Milburn. The second, the second exhibit is a east, west cross section that cuts from Douglas Street to Spring Street. And I'll zoom in here on the first exhibit. Again, we've drawn a red dashed line here. This indicates the view angle of a five and a half foot tall person standing on Milburn Avenue at the curb line, looking at that balcony. So again, I made reference that the distance there, maybe I said 231 previously, it's actually a plus or minus 220 feet. The, the height of this balcony relative to the curb is plus or minus 23 feet. And the existing structures there have sloped roofs and the ridge of those roofs are approximately 35 feet measured from the curb line along Milburn Avenue. So the area poshed in darkest gray is cutting through the multifamily residential building. The hatched area here represents the grade, the ground. The lighter gray areas represent existing structures that are being cut through in the section. And then again, here we've labeled where there are existing one story, two story structures that are seen beyond in this elevation or cross section view. The last drawing here on the screen again is the east, west cross section. So this is a section from Douglas Street to Spring Street. This shows three of the internal balconies here that are located on this particular facade that faces south. And again, the closest balcony here, the closest edge of this balcony on the second floor is approximately 80 feet away from the curb line on Spring Street. The next one is 175 feet away, and then the next one is 270 feet away. But I think it was really these two balconies here that perhaps were in question. Because again, we were showing them in the architectural elevation view. But again, perhaps weren't necessarily seen in context. So with that, you know, that concludes my architectural testimony. But I would just like to highlight that, you know, again, I think the balconies are a smart design. I think that they are in keeping with the spirit of the design standards within the zoning ordinance, other than the recommendation that they be fully recessed or recessed within the facade. But I think that the benefits of that, providing that outdoor space outweigh any, any potential detriments or impacts for future developments or existing developments. They're adequately set back from property lines to comply with building code relative to setbacks, building separation distance, light and air. So again, I think smart designs. And lastly, I'll just reiterate, I think Mr. Jaeger made reference to, but the project will be seeking a LEED Silver certification as well as a Energy Star certification. So hats off to the applicant for being willing to do so.
All right, Mr. Johnson, I have two questions with reference to the administrative reviews, which you have not covered in your comprehensive testimony. The first is, will the applicant agree to increase the access door width of the elevator to facilitate move in and move out entities?
We sure will. So that was a smart, smart comment, and thank you, Graham. We do intend to take this single door here in the elevator lobby, make that a double door so that for when residential move ins are occurring. Again, that provides six feet of clear distance there. So great comment.
And finally, will the elevator bulkheads and mechanical equipment be shielded from street level view at adjacent properties?
Yes, they will. So the I can go to the last sheet here, and I guess we'll mark this as exhibit A 12. But this is the roof plan. It's a colorized version of the roof plan, sheet A 3.1. This was in the architectural submission set. This again substantially remains the same. Location of condensing units that are approximately 42 inches of height located here around the center portion of the roof, setback approximately greater than 20 feet from the roof edge. The location of the elevator bulkheads and stair towers remain in the same location, in the same heights that which was previously approved. But given their location and heights and setback from the roof edge, they would not be perceived from the human scale at grade along the Milburn, Douglas, Essex or Spring Street frontages.
Madam Chair, I would submit the witness to the questions and examination of board members, members of the interested public.
Thank you so much. Thanks exactly. I was going to ask you to unshare. You may have to share again in response to questions. Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Johnson, do you have a colorized representation, or maybe I missed it because you moved rather quick, through of these balconies, what it's actually going to look like in the courtyard?
We do. We have a, we have a head on elevation. We have a color rendered head on elevation that depicts them. And I believe that was on. So sheet A four, which was exhibit A seven.
I think you meant of the courtyard, not the, not the.
Yeah, the actual courtyard itself.
Right, right. So I'm, so I'm, so I'm going there, right? So, so drawing number two on the south elevation of Milburn Avenue, we're showing the elevation that fronts on Mil- on Milburn Avenue. And then we're showing the elevation here that is the elevation. And then we're showing the elevation here that is, the elevation is 226 feet away from the Milburn curve.
That's what I asked. I'm asking, do you have a colorized version of that? Not like this.
That's what this is, right?
But, okay, so you don't have one of the.
I think he's asking for a plan view, not a.
Yeah, like a plan viewing, yeah. So you don't have, you don't have the same representation?
Right, so the plan view is right here. This was.
So here, here's a situation. I'm struggling to find these grandiose terms of fitting in with the relief, the visual feel, the integration into the facade based on what I'm looking at here. They look like a bunch of metal balconies tacked on the building. So I, I want to see where this whole relief and visual appeal integration to the facade is. I'm suffering to see that. So do you have a picture that shows these grandiose adjectives?
Can you clarify your comment? Are you, are you referring to the interior courtyard balconies or are you referring to the exterior Juliet balconies?
I'm talking about the interior courtyard balconies.
Sure. So, so we provided a plan here that shows the six proposed interior courtyard balconies. They're all located at the second floor, right? There are three located on the south elevation here. And then there are three internal in this corner of the facade.
I understand that.
I believe on the.
Right, I think you see a picture, a picture of them. I get, I get, I get all that. Do you have a picture that shows them sort of the way you have the left side of this building on the right side of the building, so we can see how they actually fit in with the facade? Like I said, I'm suffering to find the relief and all this other stuff you're talking about.
Sure, and that's what I was trying to get to. So, so if you would bear with me, this facade here is the courtyard facade. So it's showing these two in elevation. And you may have been misconstruing a little what I was talking about with the Juliet balconies versus the.
No, 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 I wasn't. I wasn't. No, I'm talking about these balconies. You use terms like things to the relief, the visual feel, the integration into the facade. But from these pictures, I see a bunch of metal balconies tacked on the side of the building. So I'm trying to figure out where this integration into the facade is that you keep talking about.
Well, I think so the, I think you're confusing the words I was saying. So the Juliet balconies on the exterior facade, I think, provide for architectural relief.
Okay, now use, use that terminology, use that terminology. I wrote it down here. When you had this representation and A 05.2 up. So those don't depict the Juliettes.
Well, sheet A 05.2 also has the Juliet balconies on them, so I'm just trying to clarify. But, but yes, they are, those balconies are, the, you know, the, the fascia board is is clad in aluminum. And, you know, it's, it's an aluminum, black aluminum railing system, which is typical for a residential balcony for a multifamily project like this. Again, just looking at the design standards here, again, outdoor interior balconies that don't face public right-aways are encouraged to provide for individual private outdoor space. The design of these, again, I don't think that they're negative. I don't think that they detract from the overall look of the project. They substantially are not visible from the public right away.
Okay, that's not, that's okay. Here's, here's the next question. Here's the next question I have for you, okay?
Sure.
Maybe, maybe you can answer this to me. You can, if you can, I totally understand. Why, well, see, this one you should be able to answer. Why are the balconies so haphazardly placed around the inside of this courtyard? Why aren't they evenly done on every apartment? Like, let's go back, let's go back to A 05.2. Or, or any of your overhead views of it? Yeah. So why, why doesn't the other balconies have, other apartments have balconies?
Sure, you know, it's a good comment. We were trying to minimize the number of balconies that are within that courtyard, right? So minimize, you know, minimize the amount of projections that are found within that courtyard. The larger, you know, the two-bedroom units where we chose to locate those are some of the larger units in, in the project. Again, those are areas where we have larger pieces of glass on the facade. And if you look at the facade design, you know, there are areas that I think support and can accommodate those balconies well.
Maybe you're familiar with this or maybe you're not, but what provisions are in the lease as to what can be put on these balconies?
Sure, yeah, I, I can't speak to that specifically. You know, Mr. Yager can come back and, you know, when necessary. But the residential leases can have language in there that, that control what residents put on those balconies. So for instance, you know, township ordinance, you're not allowed to have barbecue grills on these, right? You're limited, the, the lease can, can control outdoor lights or Christmas lights or, or, or other type things, outdoor plants, right? Again, these are all visible and seen. You can see these balconies from the interior courtyard. There would be a building management or representative here daily. You know, if they saw that residents are breaking their lease or doing something they're not supposed to do, I think that they would get a phone call from management. And again, that could be adequately controlled for a smaller development of 53 units like this.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Plonner, I might, this is Ed Buzeck, I might add, and, and also Mr. Johnson, that we typically put a condition in the resolutions of approval to limit what can be placed on these exterior balconies to, I believe it's just patio furniture is the way we, we work it.
Right.
We try to limit that. Not we try, we limit it in that way irrespective of what the management may do with regard to the lease.
I'm aware, thank you.
That would, that would be an acceptable condition of approval with the further recommendation that it be incorporated in the, in the rules and regulations of any tenancy occurring in the building.
Okay, thank you. And I see Diane has her hand raised. Go ahead, Diane. You're muted, Diane.
Maybe adding to a little bit what Craig says, I think that all those two bedrooms upstairs should be getting a balcony, like the two bedrooms that are closer to the corner. I was wondering why they're not getting a balcony. And I think, as you said, in this environment we're living in, outdoor space is at a premium. And I think that it's a great idea. And I think what Greg meant, like it didn't have, you didn't show the color of the brick, but I think I can certainly picture what the balconies would look like, so. Some work fine. The other thing, talking about two more. I just would like to know that as the architect, if the town does eventually put Spring Street back at two-way, and if the town does put two lanes back onto coming around Douglas, making that left onto Spring Street, that your design would accommodate this. Because I'm really envisioning a lot of congestion and a lot of circulation issues with all these cars having to make a left out of your garage, circling around past the police and fire. And if anyone's going to be going east, they're all going to be backing up because there's a stop sign there versus the yield, how that also was historically. I think these are really important issues that we should make sure that, I think it was Morgan who said before about, I'm not sure if he worded it, that your depth with that building is going to accommodate that, especially if we see that there are circulation and congestion issues. So as the architect, I don't know, Graham, you might be able to.
So. That's a great follow-up, Diane. That's a great comment. I think it's a follow-up to one of the questions earlier. That's really best suited for our traffic engineer who's here at the end. Architecturally speaking, the building works fine. But that's really sort of the site condition and site access, and I'm going to defer that to the civil engineer and the traffic engineer who are going to follow.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, and Diane, are those all your questions?
Um, yeah, thanks, Ben.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Megan?
Hello, thank you. Do you mind closing out your?
Sorry, I have to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I do have a question, a few. Your exterior Juliet balconies, what are their size, please?
They are, they're approximately six feet, six inches in width. So they're just, just greater than the door. So we show a double door there, that's a six-foot wide rough opening. And the, and the Juliet balconies just extend past, so they're a little greater than six feet in width.
Six feet, okay. And then you were speaking so fast, I couldn't get it. What, what was the purpose of taking two one-bedrooms and then turning them into two two-bedrooms? And then taking one two-bedroom and turning it into a one-bedroom? It appears then you're losing a one-bedroom and instead you're adding a two-bedroom. Why is that?
That's correct. We're adding a two-bedroom. We eliminated a one-bedroom. We eliminated, so, so the prior plan, if you recall, on Essex Street, we had approximately a 24-foot space in width that was the refuse and termination room. So we eliminated that per some concerns that that did not properly activate that facade and concerns with having that trash and refuse and loading movement occurring on Essex Street. So when that was located to the basement level with access on Spring Street, we were left with that square footage. So we simply reshuffled the units that were there and one of the one-bedrooms essentially expanded horizontally to become a two-bedroom unit. So again, through some thoughtful reshuffling of the units, one of the market rate one-bedrooms converted to a market rate two-bedroom. The overall unit count and density remains the same.
No, I know, but you lose one of the, I mean, the, the, the count seems better when it was, I guess it was 10, 10 one-bedrooms and wrote it down. You, you moved so fast, I couldn't write it quickly enough. Originally, you had 34 two-bedrooms and 10 one-bedrooms, right? And now you're getting 35 two-bedrooms and one, and nine one-bedrooms?
No, so previously we had 35 market rate two-bedrooms and 10 market rate one-bedrooms. And we now have 36 market rate two-bedrooms and nine market rate one-bedrooms. Right, so when, when we were asked by, you know, members of the public to look at relocating the trash room here, we were left with that space. What do we do with that space? We wanted to broaden active use and residential windows along that frontage. And that's what we did. So we expanded, you know, we essentially expanded the residential square footage there, which reflects that revised unit mix.
Right, but you said you took two one-bedrooms and turned them into two bedrooms. Isn't that what you said?
Yeah, so I'd have to go back. So, so, so on the second floor, on the second floor, two of the one-bedrooms.
Became two bedrooms.
Became two two-bedrooms, that's correct. But then on the third floor, on the third floor, one of the two bedrooms became a one-bedroom. So previously, we had seven one-bedrooms on the second floor, and we had 17 two-bedrooms. Now we have five one-bedrooms on the second floor and 19 two-bedrooms on the second floor.
I still think there's probably a good use, though, for more one-bedrooms rather than extra two bedrooms. That's all. That's my thought on that.
I mean, is your suggestion, is your suggestion to add density to the project to add?
My, my suggestion is to, for me personally, I'd like to see more one-bedrooms than I would two bedrooms. That's just me personally. And then lastly, in reference to the size of these balconies, these interior balconies, as looking at the plan, as Mr. Plonner had said, you really can't see it. It, it looks very shaded, and so you can't really see it in the 3D. What are the size of those balconies? They look awfully large on those interior, and they look like they're two different sizes. There are six balconies inside, but a few of them look larger than others. Can you give me the sizes of those, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, so the balconies are approximately six feet in depth. Perhaps I can share my screen again. Bear with me. So the balconies are approximately six feet in depth. And then they range in width, but on average, they're approximately 10 feet in width.
I don't, I don't want average. I want, right, I'd like to know the real sizes, not the averages. I want to know the real sizes. Thank you.
Sure, so I'd have to put a scale to it, but this balcony we're looking at here is approximately 12 feet in width. And these other balconies here are, are comparable in size.
12 feet.
We could come back to you. I can, I can, I can come back to you here later this evening with specific dimensions on there, if you'd like.
And two of these balconies can be seen from the street, is that correct?
Well, from the site sections that were shared and from the site visuals, their, their views are impaired. They're, they're, they're approximately 220 feet away from the curb. So as seen walking along Milburn Avenue, you'd have to look through these buildings, these 35-foot tall buildings. You'd have to look through them or look in between them to catch glimpses of, of those balconies. If, if these two balconies, you know, are a significant concern, we could certainly look at possibly relocating those two balconies more internal to the courtyard if that was a consideration by the board. But again, in my architectural opinion, given their location and the testimony given relative to the sightlines and their proximity to the right-ofway along Milburn Avenue and Spring Street, I really don't think that their visual impact is, is harmful to the pedestrian experience as, as viewed along Spring Street or Milburn Avenue.
Okay, and then my last question is, if you'd close that out, that's terrific. Thank you. My last question is, why aren't any, just talking about balconies, that is, why aren't any of the affordable units getting balconies? Why is it only just the market rate ones?
That's the economics associated with, you know, the economics associated with the balcony design and, and, and the rents. But, you know, if the board was so inclined, we could, again, I think there was a comment by Dan to look at adding additional balconies interior to that courtyard. That could certainly be studied.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that those are the affordable, so as far as the economy of your building, I totally understand why you place the six balconies where they are. That makes perfect sense.
Okay, um, thank you. And Maggie, those were your questions, right? Yeah, okay. I see Graham, your hand up.
Hey, thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. The first is, what was the depth of the proposed Juliet balcony? You know, I just want to confirm it's not occupiable space, probably just a small relief, but is there a depth dimension to that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's approximately six inches, six to eight inches or so is the, is the exterior of the, of the prefabricated aluminum balcony.
Okay.
So it's really not occupiable space.
Correct, yeah, I just wanted to, to confirm that on the record. My other question is, can we go back to the view of the courtyard and the fencing that's at the terrace level at the courtyard there? If we could just review, what is the proposed material? Is that just a low fence that's proposed, not location, an aluminum fence or something?
It is. So that's a, that's a powder-coated aluminum fence. We felt that rather than extending, so we have to provide fall protection there, right? So building code, you know, requires that you have 42 inches of fall protection. Rather than extending the parapet wall up and, you know, creating sort of a solid wall there and more mass, we thought that a, you know, black aluminum powder-coated fence, which really, the black gets lost when we, when you, when you look at that. And again, keep in mind the distance of this, you know, we had looked at the site section. But the distance of this from the street, and I had shown you in the section that we have buildings in front of that. If I go to the, I go to the elevation here, this is really what you see from Spring Street, right? There are existing one- and two-story garage structures and commercial office buildings or retail spaces or, you know, yoga studios and other that are located here along Spring Street. So these boxes in gray and white with the, with the, with the notation of existing adjacent structure is really what you see. Now, we could have drawn that in the elevation, but we wanted to be accurate and accurately depict what that facade and what the materials were and provide testimony accordingly. But, you know, again, that's really not perceived from the public right-of-way along Spring Street or Milburn Avenue.
Yeah, I just.
Stuart, for the record, which exhibit are you referring to, please?
Sure, Bart. Now I'm on exhibit A 11, which was sheet A 05.2, the building site section view angle exhibit.
Yes, so the building design amassing requirements in the zone under subsection H, it's item 6B. Note the following, it says buffer landscaping or low fencing should be, should be provided for privacy screening between the terrace and adjoining properties. So does the fencing you're proposing comply with that, would you say? Is it providing that privacy screening? Or is it an open fence? I guess is the question.
Yeah, so it's an open fence. However, in plan, we have, I believe there's some perimeter landscaping and buffering here. We're set back from the property line there. So you can see where the adjacent property line is being located. We're stepped back from that. We have, you know, we have some landscaping there. I mean, ultimately, we could extend the parapet wall vertical there, which would be a 42-inch-high masonry brick wall. But I think providing the aluminum balcony, the black aluminum balcony creates less visual mass there. So I, I don't personally see, you know, if we were concerned here with our project and the marketability of our project, we, you know, we certainly would go higher on that, but we don't perceive an issue there.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to note that the requirement in the zone district is for, you know, to limit, to, for privacy to respect the adjacent properties, not necessarily public visual. Next question they had is, what is the distance from the two balconies? Next question they had is, what is the distance from the two balconies that we have in this location? The two balconies that have been subject to a lot of questioning, what is the distance from the edge of that balcony to the, to the common property line with the adjacent lot number six? That's their side property line. What is it? Do we know the distance between there and that line?
Yeah, good question. So that's approximately, approximately twelve feet.
Okay, and to reiterate, the balcony projects six feet, so it's about twelve feet to that chair property line.
So, well, so from the edge of the, so I went to the edge of the balcony. Right, right. This, this building face here is setback greater than fifteen feet from that property line. So I, you know, testimony was that the balcony is approximately six feet deep. This is about twelve feet deep. So, you know, that would be obviously eighteen feet total. But it's about twelve feet back from that property line.
Okay. And do you know the, that adjacent lot number six, that property is located in the B four zone? Are you aware of what the side yard setback is for that property?
For their property?
Yeah. Should a new building be constructed there?
I'm not aware of what, what, what the B four zone is, you know, the B four zone may not permit. So no, you know, Graham, I can't answer that. Do you know?
Okay. Um, so, you know, I think, and Eileen can certainly jump in here too, if she wants to assist in this. But the, the, it can be a zero foot setback to that property line, the B four zone. So a, a building could be built to that property line.
On the ground floor or above the ground floor?
Above the ground floor.
Got it. Yeah. I mean, again, I mean, for our proposed building, it complies with building code relative to separation distance, light and air. We don't see a negative impact or, or, you know, an effect there. I think that would be a very marketable and desired balcony, you know, for a future resident of this community.
Okay. And then my last just comment or question is related to the same subsection. It's I don't see talking about the individual, the requirements for the individual private open space. The second sentence of that section, I think, is key back to Mr. Plater's questions. It reads balcony should be recessed within a wider facade or within a projecting bay rather than projecting alone from the facade. Given that this is located within the zone requirements for the building design amassing, does the, do the balconies as presented comply with this? I think that's, it's kind of leads to a question as to whether relief would be granted from the condition as presented.
Sure. So I think, I think the key thing there is balconies should, should being a recommendation, right? That they, you know, that they be recessed. They are not recessed. So other than being recessed within that facade, they do comply with the other design standards relative to the visual permeability, providing access, you know, meeting, meeting the intent of the encouragement to providing private outdoor space. But no, they are not recessed within that facade. But again, I, I believe we're meeting the intent of that. We are providing an articulated facade with relief. It's not a flat linear planer facade. But again, as previously noted, if these two balconies in particular, in particular are of great concern, we could look at relocating those internal to the courtyard. But, you know, again, from, as the designer for the project and the applicant, we're not concerned relative to their proximity, you know, to those, those adjacent property lines.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to thank you for your exhibit presentation made for a very easy presentation to follow, particularly in virtual format. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just looking if there's other hands raised. Ed, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Just regarding the balconies, is it, is it correct that the only usable balconies are the six usable balconies that are within the courtyard area?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Bozak. The only, the only occupyable balconies are the six balconies within the courtyard located on the second residential floor of the building.
Thank you. And, and second question, can you just go through the number of Juliet balconies? And Graham and others got the dimensions of that through questions they asked. I just wanted to make sure I, I have the correct number of Juliet balconies on each elevation, starting with Spring Street.
Okay. So there are seven Juliet balconies total that are being proposed. And there are three, so there are none on Spring Street. I'm going to move to Douglas first. There are three located along Douglas on the second level of residential. There are two located along Milburn Avenue at the second level of residential, at the second floor residential level. And there are two along the north elevation, which is the Essex Street frontage.
Uh, thank you.
On the second level of residential.
Thank you. The, the last question follows up on one I believe that Ms. Miggins raised. I, I understand how you are able to expand the one bedroom units to two bedroom units on, I guess, the, the ground floor on Essex Street because of the elimination of the, the refuse area. So you have extra space and, and you can now convert one bedrooms into two bedrooms. What I, what I, my question is, on the next floor where you converted a two bedroom into a one bedroom, where did that extra space go that reflected the space of the one bedroom that was eliminated?
Sure. It's a great comment. So that was really, as we, so we received prior approvals on this application about a year ago. We began advancing the schematic design, design development of the project, really the engineering of the project, working with the structural engineer, the mechanical engineer. I think we fine tuned the size of some of the units and, you know, we, 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 we stack units for structural and plumbing efficiency. So I think it simply had to do with final location of unit demising walls and the stacking of those units. As we, as we reshifted the, you know, the Rubik's Cube, if you will, with, with the unit mix on the first floor and looking at stacking those units. I think we ended up with a shift on the second floor. I can try and hone in on that exactly which two units shifted in size, if you would like. But, but, but really, the, the exterior envelope of the building actually decreased. So, so as previously testified to, the gross square footage of the building actually decreased by eight hundred and thirty two gross square feet. But the overall, you know, the overall volume did not change. It was just a matter of reshifting some of the unit demising walls and the sizes of the units.
Okay, that, that, I don't, I don't need to detail. I just gave you the explanation provided. Thank you very much. I have no further questions. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Just one other quick question that I had, and then I see Jorge, let me just ask my question real quick. So the change in surface, I saw you did some of those protrusions, just to give it a little bit of texture, visual, virtual, visual differentiation. Does that change the overall square footage, like the footprint?
This is it.
The total square footage of the project is based on sort of like the way you've articulated the.
Well, the total square footage of the project, so the total, no, the balconies, the balconies were not included.
Not the balconies, but the wall, like the, you know, just, I don't know, you're drawing it. Yeah.
Right, right. So that square footage, the exterior wall of the building actually came in, actually, actually was reduced. So previously the floor plate may have been sixty eight feet deep and now it's, you know, a sixty seven feet, six inches to meet nominal framing sizes. So again, we've actually take the exterior walls and we, you know, we've come in slightly there, mostly within the courtyard level. So along the exterior street facing facades, that perimeter, you know, remains the same. But, but some of the floor depths had changed from that, which was previously approved. But again, that was reduced.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Jorge, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a very quick question. You mentioned, I, I, I heard you mention about the bike rooms, but I don't see the bike rooms on the plans. Can you explain to me where is the bike room? And how many bikes are you planning to have there?
Sure. So I'm going to zoom in. Let me do. Thank you, Jorge. So I'm going to Exhibit A four. Yeah, so this is Exhibit A four, sheet A zero one point one. This was the ground floor comparison. So previously the bicycle storage room is located here along the exterior western wall. We now propose to relocate that bicycle room here. So it doesn't have a name on it. I think, you know, that, that tag in our Revit model was not on. I think Graham had a question in his planning report recommending a bicycle storage room. So this would provide for a secure indoor bicycle storage room. We would have approximately twenty, you know, space there for, for, for approximately twenty bicycles for the residents of this community. We also have then on the second floor of the building, moving to the next exhibit. This was Exhibit A five, the second floor plan. Again, we added approximately, you know, eighteen hundred square feet of indoor secure residential storage space. So for, you know, for residents who have a storage locker that is five by five or five by ten, a deeper unit, you could certainly locate a, you know, carbon fiber road bicycle or other within the storage area here. This is conveniently adjacent to the elevator for direct access, you know, out to the public right of way or down to the garage level.
So you, you will have there rats for bikes or that's just a storage and everybody can do whatever they want there in the storage? They can put some Casey's bikes or that works?
So that's residential storage specifically at that upper level, but they would be secure, you know, secure storage cages that would, you know, be locked and, and assigned and rented to units. So again, the, you know, the thought is, is that could be overflow, overflow storage as well for some residents. I personally have three bicycles. So, you know, again, I could, I could put my mountain bike over my road bike in there. I actually keep mine in my, or, you know, when I used to live in an apartment, I would keep mine in my apartment unit. But, so again, I think, I think the applicant's providing adequate storage here for, for bicycles as well as private residential storage for the, the future tenant for the building.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Other questions from the board from Mr. Johnson? Okay, then let me look at our participants, if any members of our public had any questions for Mr. Johnson based on the architectural testimony, feel free to raise your hand and we could call you in to ask any questions you may have. Okay. Seeing none, we turn it back to you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, may I offer a, what may be a useful or meaningful clarification with regard to side yard or rear yard setbacks in the B four zone? It is my understanding that the B four zone setback requirements are zero to ten feet where they adjoin a different district. This district would be a different district from the one that would be in the B four district. Just a point of clarification.
Thank you. So you're clarifying it wouldn't be the zero, it would be ten perhaps, a zero interpretation. Yeah.
Want to ask that the testimony of Michael Lanza Fama be given in this matter and that he be admitted to the platform for, to be sworn in to give his testimony in this regard.
Welcome. Sure, we'll have you sworn in.
Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. My name is Michael Lanza Fama. That's L A N Z A F A M A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, two fifty eight Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey. Testified before this board on the prior application and many others in the past.
And you're testifying tonight in what capacity can you confirm?
As an engineer and then later on as a planner.
Okay, great. And so both of your licenses are current in New Jersey.
Yes, they are.
Okay, welcome back, Mr. Lanza Fama. We will hear you as an engineer and a planner this evening.
All right, Mr. Lanza Fama, I think that we're running a little bit behind schedule. But if you could provide the civil engineering testimony identifying where relevant the modifications proposed by this amended application indicating what document or what documentary evidence you would like to refer to, beginning with A twelve.
Um, what would be A twelve is a colorized version.
Excuse me, I, I think we're on A thirteen if I have it correct.
I'm sorry, you're right.
And what A thirteen would be colorized rendering of the proposed site plan with compared to the approved site plan. And I don't want to reiterate everything that you've heard from Mr. Johnson, but I think it's important that there's certain engineering elements to these changes that are vital to this application and to the board's understanding of the request here to amend the application. Let's begin along Milburn Avenue and as you, as you have heard, we've clouded in red the areas where revisions have been made. And you can see through this exhibit, the elimination of the driveway out onto Milburn Avenue and into the garage from Milburn Avenue. We now simply have pedestrian access from the garage out onto Milburn Avenue or vice versa, from Milburn Avenue back into the garage. And you can see that the parallel parking spaces along Milburn Avenue have increased from the prior plan, which were three, we've increased that to six. And you can see that in the adjoining site plan. You could see how the plan itself has been altered. You could see the two way driveway in the original design and you could see the three parallel parking spaces. You'll also note the three thousand square feet of retail space that was once approved has now been increased to four thousand square feet as described by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Jaeger. As we move around the site and we come up onto Spring Street, this was one of the key changes to the project that was of great concern to some of the board members was how move ins, move outs were handled, how refuse pickup would occur and whether or not trash would be placed out on either Essex Street or Milburn Avenue. Well, we've introduced a loading area that's fifteen feet wide by forty eight feet deep. It has an additional twelve foot apron out onto Spring Street. This area is basically we're notching in the building. So the building footprint is reduced as Stuart Johnson pointed out. And also the overall lock coverage is being reduced slightly. There's still an increase and we'll get into that in a little while. But as you can see from this exhibit, that loading area would be facilitated and, and allow for the movement in and out of vehicles. And as Stuart pointed out, what we anticipate and what this has been designed for is for a typical garbage truck, rear end loading garbage truck, which is about thirty feet long and also a larger U-Haul type vehicle that could do a three bedroom move in. Those vehicles are typically about twenty to twenty five feet long. So they could be easily accommodated in that loading area without interfering with either the sidewalk or traffic along Spring Street. We will need to remove some of the parking spaces along Spring Street, those, those angled parking spaces. We had initially indicated three. However, we have done a truck turning analysis at the request of Ms. Callahan, the township engineer. And it appears that we may have to remove four and maybe even five of the parking spaces in that area. I do have an exhibit of that and I could bring that up on my screen. So this is the movement of a typical garbage truck coming out of the site. And as you can see, that last parking stall would need to be eliminated. I've had a conversation with Martha. She understood and her recommendation is perhaps we take out this parking space as well. We'll be, we'll be happy to, you know, take out either four or five, depending upon what your engineer and the township wishes us to do. But we do have to remove some of those spaces to facilitate movement in and out of the site. So I guess.
So Lanza Fama, do we, do we have this exhibit marked? If not.
This would be, this would be A fourteen, Mr. Bozak.
A, A fourteen and what it represents. A fourteen and what it represents is a rear loaded garbage truck exiting the loading area. Go back to. So moving up along Spring Street out onto Essex Street, you could see the drop off area has been reduced significantly. Essex County Planning Board has approved this configuration. It's forty feet long by seven feet deep. And as you can see from here, from this exhibit, that it's recessed and it's not a projection out into the roadway. And as I said, Essex County has approved this. By the way, there was a question, I believe, raised in the planner's memo about other agency approvals. We do have not only the initial approval from Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District. We've also had the amended plan approved. We've also secured our Treatment Works approval from the New Jersey D E P with regard to sanitary sewer connections and tie-in. And we've also received our county approval for the modified plan.
Mr. Lanza Faba, at this point, would you address the issue of the prior E I S? And it's the applicant's willingness to represent that there have been no changes and will rely on the substance of that prior exhibit introduced in the preceding hearing?
Yes, there was no amendment necessary to the environmental impact statement. We have the same number of units. We have the same car count. We have somewhat slightly less impervious coverage, not a significant number, but it is slightly less. So in my opinion, there was no need to amend the environmental impact statement for this amended application. And we can stand on the statements and conclusions that that initial report had put forward.
That could be carried forward as a condition of approval.
Correct. So let me now take you to let's put, close this one out, let's close this one out. Let's take a closer look at one of the other major elements in the development of the plan. What you see before you now would be A fifteen. And what this is is a comparison between the proposed grading plan and the originally approved grading plan. And the grading and drainage plan, I should, I should be more specific. And the, the substantial difference between these two plans, as you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, the original detention basin was located basically under the exit driveway out onto Millburn Avenue. Because that has been closed off and that will now be additional retail space. We opted to relocate the detention basin. And as we represented at the prior hearings, we increased the size of the detention facility to control the two-year storm to even a greater extent than our original design. And what we did is we extended the system and we now exit through the water room, one of the utility rooms in the building, comes out through the water service room, comes down and still ties in at the exact same location that it did under the prior approval. And as you can, let me just go through some of my numbers. In the original plan, the peak runoff rate for the two-year storm was one point nine four cubic feet per second. We've reduced that to one point five six and reduced the volume of runoff by another twenty-seven hundred cubic feet. So we're allowing for greater groundwater recharge and a better control of peak runoff rates. A similar effect occurred for the ten-year storm where four point seven nine was the peak runoff on the original plan. We're now to four point three four under the current plan. And for the hundred-year storm, eight point seven one was the peak discharge rate. We've reduced that to eight point two three. But even more interesting is that we've reduced the cubic feet of runoff for the hundred-year event by over forty-five hundred cubic feet of runoff. So this is, in my opinion, is certainly an added benefit and just demonstrating to the board that we fully intended to comply with our recommendations or our commitments at the prior hearings to increase the detention system and provide for further groundwater recharge. I believe in some of, let me go over to now the bring up the landscape plan. This is sheet A, this would be Exhibit A fifteen. This is a colorized version.
Mike, A sixteen.
A sixteen, I'm sorry, I'm losing count. So A sixteen, what that represents is a colorized version of the landscaping plan for the amended application. And as you can see, there's a substantial amount of treatment of the streetscape. One of the issues that were raised in the planner's memo was that potential conflict with some of these cherry trees along Millburn Avenue and the, and the street lighting. We'll take a second look at that and modify the landscaping as necessary so that those lights will provide the appropriate amount of illumination with, within that streetscape. In addition, we've committed to carrying that current lamp configuration, the streetlight configuration up along Douglas. So that would be a consistent look. You would have the same type of new LED type light fixture. We will also commit to providing some type of a bicycle rack that's similar to the others. It's, looks like an inverted U. It's like a silver and embedded into the sidewalk. We can provide that along our Millburn Avenue frontage now that we don't have the driveway here and that would provide for pedestrians to park their bikes as they visit the different retailers. As you've heard from the architect, because of the expansion of the retail space, we would be asking for a third sign that would be consistent with the other signage that was approved under the prior application. From an engineering perspective, I don't see a significant change in this application. I think the biggest single event for me is the addition of the loading area that certainly addressed a number of questions. And I believe also the planner had questioned some of the utility pads that exist along the east side of the building. One is a transformer pad, the other is for an emergency generator. The other is a, is just a concrete pad for access into the utility room in that area. We have a substantial amount of screening along Millburn Avenue. But I believe there was a representation or a request that perhaps we provide some type of fence screening along that property line so that you would kind of block out the view of those mechanical equipment from Millburn Avenue. And I think we've, we've pretty much committed to doing that. And that would be a condition of any approval is that we provide a solid screen fence along that side, that eastern side of the mechanical equipment. Excuse me. As far as the traffic that we've talked about, you'll hear from our traffic consultant shortly. But I just, from a civil engineering perspective, I just wanted to point out, as I think some of the other board members may have done so already. You do have the angled parking along Spring Street. So if this were to be made two-way, you would lose that, that angled parking. However, as, as Mr. Sheen pointed out, you know, we're, we're at the mercy of whatever the township chooses to do along that streetcar. If it becomes two-way, our driveways will still function appropriately. The move, the move-in and move-out and refuse loading area will still function appropriately. So in my opinion, whether that becomes one-way or two-way has no substantial or impact whatsoever on, on our application and the plan that we presented to you. So from an engineering, that's all I have from an engineering perspective.
Mr. Lanza Faba, a couple of questions to follow up. One with the engineer's review. There was a request for a photometric plan that was carried as a part of condition number nine of the prior application. Is that something that is acceptable to the applicant?
Yes, we will provide that.
And you have addressed the issue of the removal of spaces on Spring Street. Is it fair to say that all of the other comments made and recommendations made in the engineer's report are acceptable as conditions of approval?
Yes, they are.
All right now, turning to the loading zone. This property is located on four streets. So is it not true that no off-street loading zone provided for this project could be located in any place other than a front yard?
That's correct. Yes, they, obviously, as we all know, we're fronting on four streets, our only access is to a public street. So any loading area that would function appropriately for the building would end up directly accessing a public street and be located in the front yard area.
And a project of this type is one that necessarily benefits from an independent loading zone, correct?
Yes, it does.
So providing a loading zone in other than a front yard is an impossibility of performance in this project.
That is correct.
Right now, with regard to the size of the loading zone, the ordinance states that the loading zone should be forty by sixty feet. Your loading zone or the loading zone proposed is fifteen by forty-eight feet. Is that loading zone designed to adequately service the requirements of this project?
Yes, it is. As I stated in my initial testimony regarding the loading area, the trucks can easily maneuver in and out. The area is more than adequate for the depth of the trucks you saw from the exhibit. The truck turning analysis, the garbage truck, I believe, was about thirty-eight feet in length. That's still ten feet shorter than the depth of the loading area. Keep in mind that those loading regulations were written more for a warehouse-type loading space where you have a sixty-foot-deep area to accommodate a tractor-trailer and its cab. And then the sixty-foot apron is the maneuvering area for a tractor-trailer to maneuver in and out of the loading space. That's not the case here. This is a residential application. And there's really nothing in your ordinance that ever perceived that that type of ordinance, that requirement of a sixty-foot-deep loading area would be applied to a residential-type development such as this. So basically, we're asking for design waivers for the, the location and the size of the loading space and the size of the apron as well. And those are under Section five sixteen point two and five sixteen point five B. And what these, these are design waivers and there's, it's impossible for us to comply without impacting the design of the building. And there's no need, there's no practical need for a loading area that's with its, with its apron area being a hundred and twenty feet deep for an application such as this. So in my mind, I believe those design waivers are appropriate for this particular application.
As a civil engineer, Mr. Lanza Fama, would it be your opinion that requiring compliance would work an undue hardship on the applicant?
Absolutely. It's totally unnecessary and would substantially impact the overall design of the project and serve no purpose.
And finally, with regard to Article five, five sixteen of the Design Performance Standards, five sixteen two states that spaces, loading spaces cannot have direct access to a public street. Is that something that is impossible for this applicant to comply with in this project?
Yeah, absolutely. Fronting on four streets, it would be impossible for us to meet that requirement.
And requiring compliance would work an undue hardship in your opinion?
Oh, absolutely.
All right now, Madam Chair, at this point, Mr. Lanza Fama has concluded his direct engineering testimony. I would submit him on his engineering testimony to examination by the board members of the interested public. What follows will be a response to concerns that have arisen during the course of the presentation this evening with regard to the Spring Street driveway and the one-way traffic or two-way traffic on Spring Street by the traffic engineer. Then Mr. Lanza Fama will come back for his planning testimony. And at that point, the formal presentation of witnesses and evidence will have been completed.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for the, for the preview. Before we move further, Eileen, Diane had, had an issue with her computer. She's on in the panel as Jordan Egglow, who I think is one of her children. So if you can let her back in, she was able to listen, but she wasn't in our session. And Dan, while we're doing that, you can feel free to ask your first question, Mr. Lanza Fama.
I only have one question. It's my first, my first and only.
Dan, could you just tell me back who was Diane under?
Sure, go ahead.
Jordan Egglow.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. If I could just ask Sweeney to please stay. I keep losing his video or his videos. I need you to.
Sweeney to stay. Yeah, okay, we got him. Okay, great. Yep. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Everything good?
Yes.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the modification, reduction, addition of on-street parking is subject to and only, it's subject to approval and only the approval of the Township Committee. Therefore, I don't believe this board has the power to approve modifications of on-street parking. This application and in the written application on page two, number eleven discusses the modification of street parking along Millburn Avenue. So I'm wondering, and I guess again, Ed, I'm sorry, this is your special night, my question's to you. If this app, if this should be part of the applications, my understanding it should not be part of the application. It can be a recommendation as part of the application, but not a request, specific request under the application, because this board does not have the power to approve modifications of on-street parking. Therefore, the reduction of parking on Spring Street or the modification of spaces on Millburn Avenue. It's my understanding that's, that's on the Township Committee. So I would suggest that, that, that not be any more than a recommendation by the applicant, subject to review and approval by the Township Committee.
I think that's the way it would be worded. Your, your point is well taken. I think the, the, the concept is that this is the applicant's proposal. And for example, with the loading, the new loading area, the need to eliminate five spaces. That if the board approves the new loading area, it would be subject to the approval of the Township Committee to remove those five spaces. If the Township Committee elects to not remove those spaces or remove only three of the spaces, when we're talking about five, because that's the presentation, then the applicant would have to come back for modification to us. So you are correct. We don't approve the elimination of spaces or candidly, the creation of spaces. All of that is. All of that is subject to the township and and township committee approval. We would include that as a condition. And if the township committee did not acquiesce in that, they'd have to, the applicant would have to come back and propose a different. Solution to the problem.
It, it, thank you. I think it's it's important to understand what. Is under our auspices with respect to approval and what is under the township committees. So I might want to make that that comment that. That we should consider that as a recommendation. It can be, it can become part of the conditions.
I offer clarification on that. I I concur with everything that Mr. Bear and Mr. Uzak have said. With the observation that the township engineer. And the civil engineer, Mr. Lanza Fama, have conferred and the recommendation. And the is for the removal of four spaces, not five or three. And I would ask that any condition of approval. Referring to the Spring Street or Milburn Avenue parking spaces. Be phrased in such a way so that there is sufficient latitude. For the township committee to address the issue of the parking spaces. With enough flexibility so that it would not require a further amended application.
Well, we don't, I I think Martha is not here tonight. Am I, I didn't see her. Correct?
She is away this week.
Okay, so. We we will. That will have to be confirmed with her as to what she and Mr. Lanza Fama agreed upon.
Yeah, if I could just offer just a jurisdictional clarification, you know, Milburn Avenue and Essex Street are both county roads. So the jurisdiction to modify anything within the county right of way most likely would rest with Essex County. And then Spring Street and the modification to on-street parking for Spring Street is a township road, so that would less rest with the township. So just wanted to clarify that there are actually two entities. And if the applicant, you know, the applicant did indicate that Essex County Planning Board has provided approval, I believe you indicated of the amended plan. I don't know if there's any language or, you know, reference to the approved modifications to the on-street parking that was reviewed by the county during that. Process, but that may be beneficial for the board to hear if that was part of that that process.
And I disagree, I disagree because the on Milburn Avenue would still go, it would still go to the township committee. For any recommendation modification, they would still have to act on that.
Yes. Yeah, the county just gave us a blanket approval. They didn't opine specifically on the on the parking situation.
Okay, thank you.
But I think to to Dan's original point with. You know.
Yes.
Bringing up the point of.
Yeah, if you recall on the prior approval, the the notch, the drop-off area was conditioned upon Essex County reviewing it. And approving it, and they asked us to modify it. So we did.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that additional context. Thank you. Okay, guest on.
And just for clarity on that subject as well, it it looks like the parking spaces are significantly smaller than what was proposed before. Are those all legal parking spaces that are now proposed?
You mean in the garage?
No, 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 on the street, the six spaces now.
Yeah, they they are the standard parking stall sized or, I believe they're seven by twenty-three feet. Which is what's typical and they would, they would be compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lanza Fama? From the board? Okay, questions from members of the public for Mr. Lanza Fama based on his testimony. Just use the right-hand function if you have any. Okay, then back to you and Mr. Shan, I think you're going to jump to. Another witness and then back to.
Would ask that the that Craig Paragoy. The advance to the platform to be sworn to give testimony in connection with this matter as a traffic engineer.
Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's hearing be the truth, hold truth, know the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name for the record, please.
Craig Paragoy, P E R E G O Y.
Mr. Paragoy, would you give the board your qualifications to give testimony as traffic engineer?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. Testified pretty much on a nightly basis as an expert in traffic engineering, including for this application about a year ago. And who knew a year later we'd still be on Zoom.
Thank you. And Mr. Paragoy, your your certification in New Jersey is still current?
It is, yes.
Great, thank you. So we're hearing you as an engineer, traffic engineer.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Right now, Mr. Paragoy, you you have heard the presentation. Given in this matter to date and understand that the principal substantive change. Has been the relocation of the point of ingress and egress to and from the site. From Milburn Avenue to Spring Street. And you have heard the discussion. Advanced by board members and a member of the interested public with respect to two-way traffic on Spring Street. And the functioning of the. Single access point in the project. Can you in your own testimony as a traffic engineer, expert in the field? Offer your observations with regard to this subject matter?
Yeah, certainly. And Mr. Lanza Fama touched on it. There's nothing that we're doing that would prevent that two-way access on Spring Street. The design of our driveway would would stay the same. The only change is we'd remove a sign that says left turn only. Coming out of the driveway. That would really be the only difference. The other things that were brought up were, you know, possibility of. Milburn Avenue becoming two-way or that second lane coming out of Douglas Street rather than the stop sign. And I think this plan actually gives more flexibility to do that than the prior plan by eliminating that access on Milburn Avenue. That might have been a little bit more complicated, let's say, if we if we had that driveway. So there's nothing that we're doing here that precludes the town from. Doing whatever they want in terms of reorienting the streets if that should happen in the future. You know, we're not, we're not standing in the way in any way with our design.
And do you have any concerns, traffic engineer, for trip generation or a level of service issues at the corner of Spring? And in Essex?
No, I I bored you all with a pretty thorough traffic presentation at the last meeting and I I did. Re-run the numbers, just making sure that we don't have any impacts. In fact, I did it between two of the hearings the last time when we were discussing removing that access on Milburn Avenue. Just to make sure that we'd be okay in terms of capacity and and traffic impacts if we did do that. And that holds true. We are, it it, everything does work. Those levels of service that I testified to the last time do not change. It's a very minimal shift in some delay. Some go, you know, less than a half a second better and some go a half a second more. But there's really no material change at all.
Right, Madam Chair, I I would submit Mr. Paragoy to questions from the board, members of the interested public. Given the fact that the administrative reviews were not. Specifically concerned with traffic engineering issues.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the testimony. And obviously, Mr. Paragoy, you know, I know the last memorialization or resolution. Documentation was included, so people do have it, but not every member of the board who's here tonight did hear everything you said a year ago. So if we do have some questions, I would ask that you sort of repeat or or restate it. Just for the benefit of everybody hearing tonight. Thank you. And that said, did anybody have questions or questions from before that were not yet answered? That you would like Mr. Paragoy to address? Nothing. Okie dokie. Oh, Miss Egglow. Go ahead, Diane. No, oh, okay, I thought your hand was raised. Okay, sorry. Nope, you're good. Okay, seeing none, I open it to members of the public. If you'd like to raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function, if you have any questions for Mr. Paragoy based on his testimony or questions you have. Now is the time. Okay, seeing none, we thank you and turn it back to Mr. Shan.
But ask that the testimony of Michael Lanza Fama be given in his capacity as a professional planner in regard to this application.
Yes, and because you already sworn in and provided. Explanation of your planner background, we will allow you to proceed.
Right now, Mike, there are three variances requested. The first is with regard to the additional sign, which was the subject of a prior approval. In the prior resolution at condition number nine, I'm sorry. Prior sign approval was given in the prior resolution. Second. Variance request is for the location size of space and size of apron for the loading area. And the. Loading area being located at a front yard. And finally, the balconies. Could you give your planning testimony in this regard?
Certainly. The first variance dealing with signage is from section six oh six. Point four, point two, point J, point four, and and deals with the signage type. The fact that the sign itself, which is compliant in size, is not located directly on the facade of the building. But instead located on the canopy that would extend over the retail space. And as you heard from the architect, this is aesthetically pleasing. It works with the architecture. And basically, even during the last hearing. The boards planner at the time had indicated that. It had an overall appearance from Milburn Avenue facade that it was pleasing. The size and the format of the sign met the spirit of the intent of the wall sign portion of the B four zone, which regulates signs. In this area. And that this type of signage being mounted on a canopy is. A relatively new popular way of advertising and probably something the ordinance hadn't thought of. So from a positive criteria, I think it advances the element of aesthetics. That it provides for appropriate signage that can identify the retail user. I don't see any negative impact. There's no substantial detriment to the public good. Or the intent and purpose of your zone plan. I I think the sign itself. Advances that objective of creating a pleasant street facade. A pedestrian-friendly area that would be inviting to the general public. So in my mind, that could be granted as a C two variance where the benefits certainly outweigh any detriments. Associated with that variance. The next is dealing with the loading area and its maneuvering area. This is section six oh seven point three A, which deals with the size of the loading area. And its apron area. I believe I gave some testimony as the, I had my engineering hat on. That I felt that the application, the strict application of this section of the ordinance was inappropriate for this location. That the ordinance was written more for a warehouse-type loading. Situation and not one for a mixed-use residential-type facility. The. The positive criteria is advanced because it does provide for a safe means of traffic moving in and out of the site. And again, as far as the negative impacts go, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good or the intent. And purpose of your zone plan. The depth of the loading space at forty-eight feet can accommodate moving vehicles, move in and move out. Type trucks as well as the refuse trucks and smaller delivery vehicles. So in my mind, this is certainly a benefit and also a C two variance that could be granted. Without any substantial detriment to the public or your zone plan. Finally, the more difficult one in in all our minds, let's put it right out there, is the balconies. Section six oh six point four, point two, H six C. Deals with balcony projections. We're asking for six balconies in the interior portion. Facing into the courtyard. One of the balconies is six feet by fourteen feet. Two of the balconies are six by eighteen feet and three of the balconies are six by thirteen feet. The six by thirteen feet are the three balconies that are totally enclosed within the the sea of the building, if you would. And face directly over the outdoor amenity space. The two larger-sized balconies are located along that southern wall of the northern portion of the building. And in our minds, we we took to heart what the intent or what we believe the intent. Of the redevelopment plan was, and that was under six C to talk about. Interior balconies are encouraged as a means to provide private outdoor space for some or all apartments. Balconies should be visually permeable, such as with vertical posts, horizontal wires or safety glass panels. I believe Mr. Johnson has achieved that goal of providing for some outdoor space. So I see it as a benefit to the residents of this facility. As we all know. Outdoor space is a premium, especially during what we've gone through. If you're cooped up in your apartment, you certainly want to be outside to some degree. And this does that without substantially impacting the adjoining properties of the neighbors. As you've heard from Mr. Johnson's testimony and his exhibits. That the balconies, for the most part, are totally obscured from vision from Milburn Avenue. There's only a small opening as you proceed up Spring Street there where you get a side view. Of the two balconies that are located in that northeast corner. Of the building and along that southern facade. So I I think that they also add to the aesthetics of the building. So as far as the positive criteria goes, I think it does advance the aesthetics. It does advance that goal of. The redevelopment plan to provide for some outdoor open space without onto the courtyard area. And the negative impacts, I know there's much concern about the visual impact that these balconies might have. And how they might be utilized. And I think that can be controlled through the leases. There will be a person that will be policing the area on a regular basis. So the limitation of just normal patio furniture, I think, can be thoroughly enforced. And would not cause a huge detriment to the public good. So in my mind, this too would be, would fall under the C two elements of the municipal land use law. And the variances that are being requested here. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would submit this to the questioning, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Looks like we have a first question, Maggie.
Yes, thank you so much. I have to say I'm a little confused, Mr. Lanza Fama. Could you help me to understand the architect earlier said that those balconies were twelve feet? Are you suggesting now that they're eighteen feet in size?
He was, he was approximating. He said that he could, he would have to measure it. So I.
No, no, but then I asked him, yeah, he he said averages. And then I asked him to be more specific and he said, and he said, I wrote it down, twelve feet. So I just wanted to be clear. So now you're saying these balconies are eighteen feet.
Two of them are.
Okay.
Just be clear. You want me to recap the number?
No, no, you said three, three were six by thirteen. Two were six by eighteen. And then two were six by fourteen.
One was.
One is six by fourteen.
Yeah, there's a total of six.
And then I can appreciate that. There's somebody that'll be on site to check those. They say the same thing at the Upton. I'm not sure if you've been by the Upton lately, but there's a lot more stuff on those balconies. Okay, thank you. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maggie.
Can I just ask real quick that, so, Mr. Lanza Fama, what, when you spoke to the balcony? You're saying you do need a variance or? Because you you spoke to the first part that they're.
And and the way, the way the ordinance is written, it says balconies should be recessed.
Okay, that's what you didn't address and I
Oh, I'm sorry. I glanced over that. So it says it should be recessed.
That's what I
It's mandatory. However, we understand what they were trying to accomplish. And just to be absolutely certain that there was no question later on, we've requested the variance for that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Diane, do you have a question? You're muted.
Yeah, hi. Back to the signs. A couple of years ago, we passed an ordinance that retail establishments could use blade signs. So these three storefronts could probably have blade signs if they choose in the future. Question mark?
If, if, if that, if that's what the ordinance allows.
Okay. Next question, I think it was the meeting a couple of weeks ago with what was the former pet food shop. Wasn't that just approved to have balconies on Milburn Avenue? And I think where the footnotes is, I think they're going to have balconies right on Milburn Avenue. So
That is correct. I was on the footnotes application. I was not on the one across the street. That was my partner, Rich Geller.
Right, so Footnotes is absolutely on Milburn Avenue. So I think
That's correct.
This is not an issue, shouldn't be an issue. And the pet shop, which I believe was passed unanimously by this board, has balconies three right on Milburn Avenue. I just wanted to remind everybody about that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Diane. That's fine. Yep, unless, that was good, but let's, let's try to keep it to questions from Mr. Alonso Fama, but that was a good clarification point. Gaston, go ahead.
Thanks. What would be preventing anybody from using one of the tractor trailers to move in? Is there going to be something in the leases that tell them not to do it, or how is it going to be prevented?
Yes, the, when you sign a lease, you'll be given a move-in date, a time. You'll be, it'll be explained to you, the maximum size vehicle that you could utilize, and it'll be all pre-arranged.
Good, thank you.
Great, thanks. Other questions from Mr. Alonso Fama? Okay. Questions from members of the public from Mr. Alonso Fama regarding his planning testimony. Jeffrey, is that raise hand function if you have any questions? In the planning testimony. Okay, seeing none. I turn it back to the applicant, Mr. Shan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the only thing left in this application, if it were considered under standard practice, would be the 20 to 35 minute statutory and summation of council, which in this case I will waive based on the premise that I can add nothing to enhance the planning testimony in support of proofs under the ordinance and would submit the application to the board's most favorable consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shan. Okay. Before we go too much further, you know, Dan brought up earlier the comment on the EIS waiver request, which I think we've touched on now. Are there any other waiver requests that we would need to address before we could move forward, like as part of this application? I know I heard some conditions mentioned and obviously the variances. But if we were to move forward, is there anything that we procedurally skipped?
I, I don't, I don't see it.
I just wanted to confirm. Thanks. Okay. Comments or additional questions or items for discussion by members of the board before I do turn it out to the public for any additional testimony? Okay, let me do that. Let me open to the public. If anybody just wants to provide public testimony, be sworn in and have a couple of moments to share your thoughts or input, now is the, your opportunity. This is on the application as a whole. Anybody from the public who would like to raise their hand to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none, we turn back to our board. So discussion, questions, concerns, reactions. Craig, go ahead.
Do you want to break this down, these, these variances into separate votes, or are you going to vote all three at one time?
I think we, if we're going to grant, that was what I was kind of asking Ed. So we don't, we don't have to handle them individually before? We could just take it as a vote on the application as a whole granting the variance?
That, that's up to the board.
Yeah.
If there's some concerns about some of the variances or granting some of the variances, oh, we should probably take the votes on the variances separately from the vote on the cyclical group because these, particularly the balcony variances, the, the application can still go forward without, without balconies. I'm not swaying one way or the other. I'm just suggesting that, that it can go forward. So it would make sense to, to take that, that variance separately. Likewise, with the signage type, sitting the same thing. I do know, and I meant to mention this to Mr. Alonso Fama in his testimony, the applicant already has approval for two canopy signs for the two adjacent red, retail structures. So it would, I think it would be another basis for granting the variance for the third retail structure now, so that you have some symmetry and consistency in the signage as opposed to having two canopy signs and then the third resident, the third retail facility having, not having a canopy sign. But in any event, you know, if that's the board's wishes, then still they can, they can proceed with the, with the other item. And the the loading space, that, that is more problematic, but certainly that is, if that's denied. But that's, that's something that again, I think can be voted on separately. So that it's, it's to the board's discretion as to how they want to handle it.
Sure. I guess Craig, you brought it up. Was there, I mean, I know we, we handle things slightly different, obviously, than the zoning board. But was there a reason that you felt it was worth, worth it to separate them out?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're going to vote on, if someone wants to deny one of the three, they all deny. If someone wants to, you know, approve one, but deny two, then you effectively deny them all. So, so it probably makes sense to break them up so that if the loading dock, say, is okay and the signs are not, then they can get their loading dock, but maybe not the signs. So I, obviously it's your show, so.
Yeah, that's fine. It's all of our show. Great, sure. So why don't we take them one at a time? The first variant is for signage. And the third, the three retail signs, as discussed by multiple multiple witnesses, but most recently by Mr. Alonso Fama. So this would be, there was variance relief permitted for the two, but this is to provide relief for the installation of a third retail sign to match the other two. So did anybody make a motion to approve said variant?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Made by Diane. Anybody second that? Thanks, Gaston. So I guess we take a roll vote? I mean, you're muted.
I second that.
It's, thank you. Gaston seconded.
Gaston, help her.
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Greg Plentner? Sue Jabashawn? Diane Aglow?
Yes.
Trudy BJ? Daniel Bear?
Diane, you're muted.
No, I said yes.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yes. Yes. Okay, great. So that's the first of our three variances to undertake. Second, we'll move to the balcony, the balcony projections. So there are six interior balconies, as we saw, facing onto the, the courtyard as described by the architect, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so, sorry, sorry, Craig, you got it.
So in discussing these two variances, from a C1 prong or the C variance, I feel that this doesn't really apply as this is clearly a want and there's really no particular attributes of the property that are restricting this. So from the C2 prong, as to whether or not it's detrimental to the zoning plan or the master plan, I feel that these, these are tacked on, that they really do not aesthetically accomplish much. They're haphazardly placed around there. And I don't feel that they add a, any value to the master plan or zoning plan at all. As to, for being actually detrimental. I don't know if so much is detrimental, they don't see them as being any type of value add. And the, the prong of C2 is really that it has to benefit the the zoning plan as much as, so much as detriment to it. So I don't think these are a value add to the property. I think that it's, it's really sort of detracts from the attractiveness of the building. And maybe if they were in, in set, it would be a little bit more attractive. And they're certainly too large. So I would not vote in favor of the variance for the six balconies.
Okay, thank you. I mean, certainly everybody, that's why we're here. We're all allowed to share our, our input and feedback. And I think right from the, from the zoning perspective, I hear your argument. I mean, I, I think I interpret that the C2 variance, you know, a variance that's granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think the testimony they provided, how far setback it is, other examples that we have currently being sort of in the approval process and what we're seeing around town. What is comparable to other, you know, like similar luxury apartments.
Not necessarily.
And the fact that these are, you know, up and you're overlooking the courtyard. Some people have those private balconies and these are upper level. I, I think it makes the building attractive for attracting residents to the, to the community. I think the four of the six, at the very least, are interior that aren't visible from the street or even really from Spring Street. I heard the applicant say that they'd be willing to possibly remove those two or reduce those two that are, have some visibility. So I think we could coordinate with them or move with them. But my, my take is that I, I don't find it so offensive or I don't know, slapping in the face of, of any ordinances that we have in town. That's my interpretation, but open it to more discussion. Diane, I see your hand raised.
Now, I understand why, Craig, you wanted to split this out and we could have more discussion. I think that these are market rate apartments. We should be offering the most amount of amenities as we can. I think this, they're not visible to the street as footnotes and where the pet shop was, and those were both passed. I think this is giving something to our residents. I mean, the Fairshire Housing project is going to go up at 11 Main Street, has an entire slab of concrete, if that's how it's going to be designed, that the idea is we want to give residents outdoor space. And as I said, these are going to be expensive apartments. And it's absolutely a wonderful idea that they have balcony space. I don't know those zone things you were talking about, Craig, but I think we want to give the most amount of amenities to people who are moving into our town. We want everyone to really enjoy living here.
Okay, other members of the board, I guess, would be good to weigh in just to hear if people are interested in going back to the applicant, especially Gaston. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Diane and I also agree with Craig because, I mean, it doesn't look so great. They are just kind of tacked on, they're put on random apartments. They should be on all of them. They should look more uniform. It is nice to have the balconies and I think they do have the option. But the option that was put forth in the ordinance is that they should be recessed. And I think that's where my sticking point is. They can do it. They added a two bedroom. They took away a one bedroom. They can make a recessed balcony. So do it. And that's where I stand.
Okay.
I'm against.
So Gaston, based on, I mean, because we're asked to evaluate sort of the proposal in front of us, you're saying you're, you're not in favor of, of the way that it stands right now?
Yeah, I would not vote to give them a variance on that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Nor would I.
Okay.
Wait, can I question? Um, our job as planning board members is not to design. Isn't that the architect's job?
That is correct, but because, because the applicant has mentioned that in, during the conversation, that they would be willing to make a change, then I think we would offer them the ability to, you know, follow up on that, but
You're saying, if they're willing to recess it, I mean, I'm not an architect, I'm not a builder. If they're willing to
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we had talked about recessing. I don't, I didn't hear that as what they had offered before. We can certainly ask for clarification, but what I heard was that they said they'd be willing to look to redesign or possibly remove, I think, those the two that were closer to Spring Street, if, if we felt that those were not interior and not, you know, sort of away from sightlines and somewhere that the public would, would see.
But I don't understand something the public won't see. We just approved two other buildings with balconies directly on the avenue. Can we get clarification from the architect?
Diane, are you setting precedent? Is that what you're saying? That each case does not stand on its own two feet, that every case follows precedent?
If, if you're using the argument that they're on the, on avenue and people might see them, how can you use that?
That's not the argument I used, but
I'm just asking other people on the board member, because that was brought up, that it's, you might be able to see it. Why do you not want these people to have balconies? They're going to pay a lot of money for these apartments. So maybe the architect would agree and recess them, but they're certainly entitled to have it, a balcony. I don't understand why this is a sticking
Well, I think, I think he's staying in line with the zoning that we have established for our community. You know, the, there's a reason we have the zoning in the first place, right? We had developed these and there were restrictions on the balcony. So I think Craig is saying, let's, let's keep to that or
My, 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 my response is strictly based on municipal land use law. It's not based on what people in apartments should or should not have, what they're entitled to or not entitled to. It's strictly from a land use law. And they're coming to us asking for balconies to be put on the outside of the buildings. They can have it conform and be put inside. So people can still have their balconies. They're so entitled to their, their, their space outside. It's just that it's not tacked on the outside of the building.
What do you mean inside? I'm not following.
A balcony that's flush with the building, but maybe pulled back.
So take away from living space inside the apartment?
Well, right, but whatever you value more, outside space or inside space.
They can have both.
And you can vote that way.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we need a motion. Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, let, let me just set, set the stage here. We, we are voting on these separately and I know Craig has talked about the, you know, what the standards are and, and how this should be viewed. And, and there is some, some lively debate here with the board and that's, that's terrific. But the standards that we need to apply and that the applicant relied upon is, as Mr. Alonso Fama said, the C2 criteria. The C2 criteria for variances is that there, the purposes of the land use law have been advanced or will be advanced by the granting of the variance. And that when you weigh the benefits of the deviation of granting that variance against the detriments of granting it, it falls on the side of granting the variance. So the detriments, the benefits outweigh the detriments. So it's a, it's a two-pronged test. Plus then, in addition, you have the negative criteria that you're all familiar with that applies to all variances, which is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, meaning there's no detriment to, generally to the surrounding neighborhood and area. And that there's no substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance. and that there's no substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance and zoning plan. Now, of course, there's always an impairment of a zoning ordinance when you are granting a deviation from the zoning ordinance. But the key there is a substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance. In this case, it has been pointed out that the requirement is really drafted in the form of a recommendation saying they should be recessed. The ordinance could have said they shall be recessed. That would then be the evaluation that board members make based upon the proofs that have been submitted, I think, would be different. Here, it was not a mandatory requirement, but certainly something that the boards could take into account. So that's the context in which the board members should be evaluating the variance that relates to all these variances, because they were all based upon the C2 criteria, but certainly with regard to this one that has created the debate. Thank you.
Okay, guest on.
Yep. Ed, so to follow up on your statement then. So if it is the difference between should and shall, are they actually, do they need a variance for this? Because it should. So they can technically do what they want to, so there is no variance. I think Mr. Lonzo Fama did draw a little light to that. Like, how do we proceed with that?
Well, they've applied for the variance and it's our job to act on that. So I think, I think your point is well taken, but they've approached it in that way and I think we need to deal with it. And that just adds, reminds me of one other thing that I want to mention. I know that in these applications, and we've had this happen on numerous occasions, where applicants raise issues that they're, or raise responses that they're willing to do this or they're willing to do that, or they can do this, they can't do that. And that becomes problematic in terms of the application that's before us. We have an application before us. They're asking for six balconies. They're not asking for two, they're not asking for 14, they're asking for two. They talked about, oh, well, we're willing to do this. We may be willing to cut out two balconies or whatever the testimony was, but that is not the application that's before us. If they wanted to do that, if they wanted to amend the application to say we'd like to amend our application sort of on the fly to eliminate these two balconies before you consider your vote, that's fine. They didn't do that, and I'm not suggesting they should have done it. But we can't be saying, well, okay, we'll grant you a variance for four of them, but not for six. And we're going to grant them for these four or these three or whatever.
Right.
It's six or one, as it relates to these. So I wanted to just clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thanks. So where we're at, I guess, we could open it and edit it through that somebody could make a motion to either approve or deny.
Yeah, and I think that would be the action or the motion that would be made, not, you know, we approve four or six of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Four or three of them or anything like that. So yes, someone should make a motion to either grant it or deny it and
Okay.
Diane, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve it as presented with the six balconies.
Okay, is anybody second that?
I'm going to second it.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Guest on, Halbert.
Only because it says should, I say yes.
Maggie Miggins?
No.
Greg Platner?
No.
Sue Javishan?
You're muted.
You're muted.
No.
Diane Aglow? Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, so the variance is granted. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the third of the variances, which is for the loading, maneuvering loading space. That cannot be provided in the street and the applicant is proposing to remove the three angled parking spaces on Spring Street to accommodate the loading. That was how Graham characterized it in the planning report. I just want to make sure I'm characterizing that still correctly. Graham, could you confirm with that, sort of that characterization?
One second, let me just pull it up. Yeah, I think that, given the testimony this evening, it should just be related to no maneuvering areas may be located in any street. Given the change in the number of parking spaces that may be eliminated or have to be relocated, we should leave that subject to a condition. So, but it should just be, the variance relief is that to permit maneuvering within a street for loading space.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any discussion concerned with the variance for loading? Anyone make a motion to act on it?
Move it.
Okay, Diane, you made a motion to approve the variance for the loading, okay.
Please.
I will second it.
Guest on, Halbert?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Greg Platner?
Yes.
Sue Javishan?
Yes.
Diane Aglow?
Yes.
Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah. So with all variances, those three variances.
We then have two design waivers, if I have it correctly. Yeah, two design waivers, I believe. And amended site plan approval, which sort of ties in all of this together. Again, it's the board's discretion as to whether they want to deal with the design waivers separately and take separate votes on them. They're really tied to the overall plan. So my recommendation would be to just incorporate that into one vote, which would be to grant or deny amended site plan approval and the waivers, the two waivers that were requested accessed. And again, they're outlined pretty clearly in Graham's report. Direct access to a public street for the loading space and the size of the loading space, 48 feet versus 60 feet required under the design standards.
Okay, thank you, Ed, for the recap and the recommendation too. I think my thinking is in line with yours, so let's just move forward on the full site plan application as a whole at this point. Does anybody want to make a motion on this application?
I seem to be the motion maker, I'll make the motion.
You're making a motion to approve this application?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Thank you, guest on.
Guest on, Halbert?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Greg Platner?
Yes.
Sue Javishan?
Yes.
Diane Aglow?
Yes.
Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, so application 21009 approved tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate the courtesies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beginning of our meeting, Ed Duzak raised the fact that we do have two ordinances to act on. However, if I recall, we have 45 days to act on these? Is that accurate?
I think it's 35 days. Well, let me check.
And Eileen, they were just introduced last week, right? So we're only about seven days in? Where I'm getting at is I'm proposing to hopefully defer this to our next meeting.
It is 35.
Everyone can follow my train of thought.
Hold on one second. These were introduced at the February, the first meeting in February, correct Diane and Maggie?
So, you mean March or?
I'm sorry, March.
Okay.
They were, no, they were approved because we have to, our next planning board meeting is after when their second meeting is proposed for. Because they had their meeting the day before our planning board meeting, so I didn't have these.
Oh, on the first?
Yeah, I have the memo that Christine had sent. Introduced March 1, they're on for final adoption on April 5.
So that's. We don't meet till the 6th.
Okay, but that's also not 35 days, but.
That's correct. If we don't act within, if the 35 days has not expired, the township committee is unable to act on the ordinances at their April 5 meeting, they'd have to carry it to the next meeting.
Okay, so we can carry it. I think it's too late, it's going to need a lot of explanation, Ed.
We're pretty, I'm sorry, we're pretty close here. I didn't count the days, March 1, 31 days in March. And April 5 is another five days.
Oh, it's not business days?
That's 36, no, it's calendar days, that's 36. But I'm not sure if you count March 1, that might be just 35 days. I'd rather not play it that close, and I know it's late. But they are, in fairness, Graham sent out the two memos. And, you know, I think, two things. Number one, I think it's pretty clear, I think he laid out the areas. And secondly, as you all know, we are trying to resolve our affordable housing cases and our affordable housing matters. Both of these ordinances are part of that settlement and I think certainly advances the goals that Graham pointed out in his two memos, so.
That's fine, yeah, I agree. Okay, so why don't we have the discussion? Let's try to keep it as brief as we can. I was able to review Graham's helpful memos. My take on both of them is similar to what Ed said, that we're both sort of obligated by, you know, the fair share housing requirement by the state of New Jersey and by our plan to advance and move forward on adopting these ordinances. So they've been drafted to do so. I didn't see any issues, concerns, or alternative recommendations that Graham had suggested. So I don't think there's anything inconsistent with the master plan from my read of both the language as well as Graham's plan. So I have no level of discomfort, but I'm speaking about both. But if anybody wanted to raise any concerns with one or the other, feel free to do that, no.
Well, you know, in perfect transparency, I voted no on two of them at the TC meeting and I have stand on one, so I am not comfortable voting on these. So I'm just going to recuse and say goodnight, if that's acceptable, Ed.
That's certainly up to you.
Yeah, I think putting pressure at 11 o'clock at night, and I think they should be fully discussed. So if you're going to vote on it, I'm going to recuse and leave. I don't think it's appropriate.
I think Diane, I think the action would probably just be to abstain from it as opposed to recuse yourself. I don't think there's any.
I voted no. I think these are really important for the township. I think these require discussion, not starting 11 o'clock at night. Yeah, that's my opinion. You, you know, I'm not shy with my opinions, as you know.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it, Diane, if you want to, you know, depart, I respect that, that you can do that. And I think you provided.
If you're telling me that you're, I'm going to interrupt you, but it is very late. If you're telling me you're going to be voting on it, then I am going to sign off. So do you intend to?
So, we don't vote, we just decide, we just make a recommendation if it's not inconsistent with the master plan. We're not voting to approve it, that's not our purview. So we've had both the language of the ordinance and the planner's report, so I don't think we're getting into it at 11 PM. But I totally appreciate what you're saying. So all we're talking about is consistency with the master plan and if what is proposed is consistent.
I'm not comfortable with it, so I'm going to say goodnight to everybody, so, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night, everybody. See you in two weeks.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd like to add to this is that I've seen these ordinances before in other cases. They're typical of what both of these kinds of ordinances have, a mandatory set aside ordinance. There's nothing unusual in this ordinance as compared to what I'll call the standard mandatory set aside ordinance. And likewise, with regards to the affordable housing provisions, many of those are regulatory requirements that are incorporated in the ordinance. But this is a, I hate to say it's a standardized ordinance, but it's a standardized ordinance with, you know, minor tweaks in it. Thank you.
No, understood, and I appreciate that. I think that's helpful for the board to hear as well. Did anybody have any concerns or questions that they wanted to ask or bring up either to Graham, planner, or anybody? Okay, so if so, I would propose that we move forward. I know they're sort of treated together in the memorandum that we received, but I think we should vote on them individually. So if that's okay, so let's move forward. The first one numerically is 2596-22. And if I can find the formal title, well, that's 2596-22. Great, and that's defining, right, the terms and creating the opportunity as creating the affordable housing framework. Okay. So I propose to make a recommendation back to the township committee that this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. Does anybody second that?
I second that.
Guest on, Halbert?
Yes.
Jorge Mascher Pietro?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Greg Platner?
Yes.
Sue Javishan?
Yes.
Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, and now we will move to ordinance 2597-22 with the township. And yeah, the first is 2696, this is 97-22, they are very similar, I will say. And I similarly make a motion to state that this is not inconsistent with the master plan of our township. Does anybody second?
I second.
Guest on, Halbert?
Yes.
Jorge Mascher Pietro?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Greg Platner?
Yes.
Sue Javishan?
Yes.
Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, I think we spent more time talking about whether we should vote in voting. Thank you. In Under the Wire, it is almost 11 PM. I thank you all for staying with us, staying awake, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
This is going down.
Okay, we'll let Maggie have a second on that one. Thank you all, we'll see you at our next meeting, is that April?
6.
6. Okay, thank you, good night.